So I am just gonna turn videos off for those who are not on the Planning Commission, just so everybody knows.
I'm turning off my cellphone, too. I did just send out a text to Denise and Ed, just a reminder.
Looks like Denise is here.
Oh, okay, good. She is here.
Oh, there we are. I'm not at home. I apologize. I'm a little bit.
Well, that's okay.
I'm just not at home. I'm trying to get my computer hooked to the internet here.
Well, it sounds like you're on, so that's good. And I just sent you a text, so ignore it.
All right, thanks.
It just says Zoom. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. It's 6:30, and I'd like to welcome you. It's 6:30 on Monday, April 26, 2021, and I'd like to welcome you to the Sagatuck Township Planning Commission meeting. First of all, I would like to call the roll. DeFranco?
Here.
Helmrich?
Here.
Eileen?
Here.
Israel? Here. Shipley?
Here.
Webster?
Here.
Well.
Chair, just a reminder, if you're not in Sagatuck Township, maybe just let us know where you're calling in from.
Shipley, I'm in Rochester, Minnesota.
Is anyone else zooming in from anywhere other than Sagatuck Township?
I'm from Douglas.
Denise Webster?
No, I'm in Sagatuck Township. There's somebody else.
No, just Planning Commissioners, that.
Planning Commissioners.
Okay, I'm.
I'm sorry. Okay. Planning Commissioners, everyone is here in Sagatuck Township except for Denise Shipley is zooming in from Rochester, Minnesota, correct? And Ed Welk has not come on yet. Okay, our meeting is called to order, and the first thing I would like to do is just welcome Denise Webster to our Planning Commission. And Denise, would you like to just say a couple of words about your experience or just anything? But we all welcome you, so thank you for being with us tonight.
Well, thanks. And I realize that, you know, my, my experience in planning and zoning comes from my, my prior residence in Isabella County. If you're familiar with that, Mount Pleasant, I was involved with the county planning and zoning. And, and then as I moved into different townships became my last, before I moved down here to Sagatuck, was with Union Township Planning Commission. So I've been involved with zoning, planning and zoning for, I'm not sure if I know how many years, probably 30-plus years. I am a retired faculty member from Central Michigan University that after 30-some years, I was just short of 34 years. I started as an, I'm an athletic trainer, actually, and taught in our athletic training program. And then I also did some work with some higher administration, both from a curriculum and assessment and my, as I completed my last four years, I was the interim associate dean for our College of Health Professions. So that's where it is. I'm originally from Erie, Pennsylvania, so I'm actually a born and raised Pennsylvanian. I spent some time out in Arizona and then spent the last 35 years here in Michigan.
Welcome.
Thank you.
It'll be nice when we can all meet in person. I think there's other people I don't know that we've even been with more than once or twice, so I look forward to those days. Linay, would you please review the Zoom instructions for our meeting this evening?
Yeah, sure. I'm just gonna read them from my other screen. Please say your name before speaking and before making a motion. Planning Commissioners are required to state their location during roll call, which you did. Please mute yourself when you are not speaking, star six if you're using a phone. Do not click unknown links that may be shared in the Zoom chat. The township does not disseminate information with this function. The meeting is being recorded. Please be respectful of those speaking and do not interrupt. If anyone is disruptive to the point of preventing the Planning Commission from conducting business, you will get one warning before being removed from the meeting. If there's a problem with Zoom, the meeting will be reset utilizing the same meeting information. If the meeting is unable to continue, a notice will be issued on the Township Facebook page and website. Planning Commissioners, emailing or texting is not allowed during the meeting, and be patient. We're all learning. We'll be, we'll attempt to be as deliberate as possible and get through this as a team. Unless there's any questions, we'll just continue with our meeting then.
Thank you, Linay. Are there any questions? Okay, the first thing that we need to do is approve our agenda for this evening. Are there any additions to the agenda or changes to the agenda for this evening? I have a, go ahead, Daniel.
No, you go ahead, Becky. You might be saying what I was gonna say.
Go ahead, Daniel.
I was gonna add under Old Business that we add the book discussion of Stronger, of Strong Towns.
Okay, perfect. That was on my thoughts, too, so thank you. Any other additions?
Um, okay, we could add the correspondence that was received over the weekend and after the packet went out. So that'd be Item D, an email from Roy McElain. Item E, a letter from Marsha Sikora. And Item F, a letter from Scott Wieringa.
Okay, and we all received those in our email packets?
Correct.
If you didn't see them, you do have them. Okay, thank you, Linay. Any other additions to tonight's agenda?
Shipley, may I ask a question, please? Are we talking about the letters that I just received by email, maybe an hour or so ago? Is that the ones we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize. I have not had an opportunity to read everything thoroughly, but I'll do my best. Thanks.
That's okay. That's fine, Denise.
When it comes in, I apologize, I'm interrupting again. When everything comes in a bit late, it's a bit hard to research. For me personally, to speak knowledgeably at all, it's difficult when it comes in. So that's all. Thank you.
And it's just correspondence? It's not discussion or?
But with all due respect to that, there were things on the correspondence about township ordinances and such, and I don't even have the time to look those up. So, so things like that, where they, where they mention specific policies or ordinances, then I do think I would like to have the time to look up those ordinances. So, thank you, though.
I understand what you're saying, but sometimes when they come in late, you're going to get.
I'm not saying there's anything you can do about it. I apologize for that, too. I'm not saying it, if they don't come in till an hour before, that's when they come in. So maybe for the public, maybe I, maybe my conversation is a bit more towards the public. If they are going to send correspondences, just personally for me, if they came in, at least, you know, I'd like a day. So, thank you.
Our packets are done about a week, the Tuesday before the Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah, Denise, these didn't come in today, but they came in after the packet was released and they were updated.
Okay. Thank you. I just like to research everything. That's just my personal thing. The more time I have, just the better for me.
Okay. No, we understand. All right. Any, any other additions to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda with those items added?
A motion to approve the agenda.
With the additions?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Shipley and seconded by. The agenda's approved. Moving on to the minutes.
We didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been too long. I'm not doing it very well. I'll do a roll call vote. DeFranco?
Yes.
Helmrich?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Israel's, yes. Shipley?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Welk is not here yet. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Daniel, nice job with the minutes again, as always.
Yeah, thank you, Daniel.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to Page 1? Page 2? Page 3? Page 4? Page 5? Page 6? Page 7? Page 8? Page 9? Page 10? Page 11? Page 12? Page 13? Page 14? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, this is Helmrich, that we approve the minutes as submitted for the February 22, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Moved by Helmrich. Is there a second?
I'll second. Shipley?
Seconded by Shipley. And I will do a roll call vote. DeFranco?
Yes.
Helmrich?
Yes.
Is the rolls. Yes, Eileen?
Yes.
Shipley?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Welk, not here. Okay, thank you. Thank you again, Daniel. So it's a nice job. It seems like it was so long ago when I read them today, but it was good.
Thank you. A pleasure.
Okay, so thank you for starting the meeting earlier tonight. We have two presenters, and the first one is Jim Seering from our Parks Department. And Jim will be speaking about the Parks Department. There is some information in our handout, and I think I'll turn it right over to Jim right now. And he has 30 minutes to speak to us. Our second presenter tonight will be Mark Rodman, who is the Executive Director of Michigan Historic Preservation Network, and he'll also be speaking to us for about 10 minutes in our meeting this evening. So, welcome. Jim, would you like to start?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
About a month ago, Becky asked me if I would do a little presentation on the Park Commission. So I agreed, and obviously, that's why I'm here. I hope you don't approve those minutes that are right on the screen right now. Those are from 1975. The thing I wanted to talk about first is a little brief history of the Park Commission, explain a little bit about these minutes, why I included them, and then talk about the various parks, and then talk briefly about our budget and the future of our parks. And I'd like to make sure I get to that. So if I speed up a little bit, because I feel like I'm running out of time, that's why, because I would like to get to the last item. As far as the history of our parks, in 1905, there was some legislation passed by the state which allowed townships to create park commissions. It required a, an amendment that placed on the ballot, a resolution to create a park commission. And in 1970, the township voted 622 to 250 to create the Sagatuck Township Park Commission. The bylaws were adopted in 1974. The minutes I included, I thought were interesting, because the chairman at that time was Art Lane, who sadly recently passed away, and we received a number of donations in his name. He was actually chairman for 19 years. The other thing that I thought was interesting is that the minutes also included Patty Burkholtz, who's a famous local citizen. She started her political career on the Parks Commission. It mentions Jim Sheridan, who's from a local family that has been involved a lot with Sagatuck politics, and the Wilkinson's, who I believe are the family that ended up owning Conings Hardware Store, which is also mentioned on these minutes. So I thought it was interesting. This, Aaron Sheridan found, when he, he was a township manager, found this a number of years ago and gave it to me, and it ended up in a pile of stuff that I thought would be appropriate to just show you folks. What I found interesting as I went through the history of the parks, apparently, there were no other park commissions in Sagatuck, Douglas, or a community rec in the school systems. And Sagatuck Township, up until 1986, received a third of their budget from the Township Park Commission, from the city of Sagatuck. They were involved in the planning and financing of the architectural design that went into the bicentennial, the ban shell that was built at Wick's Park for the bicentennial celebration. They also were involved in the deck. They paid $700 towards the deck that's on the river across from Mount Baldhead. That's the deck with the, there was a deck, and then the stairs went down to the river. And they also made some suggestions for the improvements that were made to the Mount Baldhead stairs and the decking up there. So they were involved in that. They were also involved with an ice skating rink at Berry Field. For a period of time, they had an employee that was funded by a federal legislation during the Nixon administration that was an attempt during a period of high unemployment to create local jobs. And so there was a fellow that worked for the Park Commission, whose salary was paid by a government grant. Eventually, a lot of these, these functions that they were involved in were picked up by the other cities and the Department of Parks and Recreation, that's part of the school system. And in, I think it was 1986, was when Sagatuck, the city of Sagatuck, withdrew their funding to the Township Park Commission, and I assume that's when they started their own Parks Department. As far as questions, I, it's hard on a Zoom call to take questions, but I'll pause periodically and ask if any, anyone has any questions. This would be a good place to pause. Does anyone have any questions regarding that? Okay, the bylaws that were adopted in 1974 are on file at the township. Basically, they allow the Park Commission to maintain park facilities, acquire new park property, adopt the park's budget, and develop a recreation plan. Because we're an elected, because we're elected, we have additional responsibilities and duties that an appointed commission does not have. So these are more detailedly defined in this resolution. So again, that's also at the Township Hall, if anybody's interested. It's actually a two-page document. So now I'll talk briefly about our parks. Our first park is a Veterans Park. That's that little rec rest stop on Blue Star Highway. What's interesting, when I, when I look up Michigan A-2 or Blue Star Highway, pops up on Wikipedia, and there's a whole history of that road. The Veterans Park has a historical marker there, and it's dedicated to the veterans. It was, it was probably a rest stop. The township and the Alleghen County Road Commission jointly managed it, and they allow us to use it as a park. We've, we've taken over the maintenance of the, of the park, and it's actually in the road right of way. So there's not a deed or anything for that park. The interesting thing about that park is just to the south, Goshawn Creek crosses the, the road, Blue Star, and that property is for sale. I noticed John Vanderbeek was on the agenda at some point. He has talked to Joe Malakis. Joe Malakis owns that property, and is trying to arrange a, right of way or an access for a trail. I think that's still being negotiated, but it's certainly a nice piece of property behind the park. The second park is Sundown Park, which is actually a road end. It, it ends at Lake Michigan. It's on Lake Shore Drive. 126th Avenue is, is the road. It's, it's, it also includes a drain. The county drain is there. And again, jointly between the Drain Commission and the Township, we manage that park. It's currently closed because of beach erosion. What was interesting, when I went back and looked through some of the old parks reports, I found that in the high-water period in the 80s, they lost about 10 feet of the bluff at that time. They decided not to try and reinforce the bluff, like is going on right, right now, all along the lake shore. This recent lake shore, or the lake rise, caused a problem at our park. The drain, when the bluff collapsed again, and we probably lost at least another 10 feet, it broke the drain. So the county drain is broken in that, in, in the park. There's been a proposal, and I'm not sure exactly where it is. The park is currently closed, but the Drain Commission plans to excavate that and replace the drain. There's also some, been some conversation to allow beach access there, and the homeowners on either side have, have agreed to fund some kind of barrier along the, the lake shore there, because if they don't, and we have another high, high-water period, and the park continues to erode, it'll allow the, the lake to cut in on the sides of their property. So I'm not sure when that will be done, but I, I know the park won't reopen until that drain is repaired. And they have also agreed to redo the, the park, basically, to its current state. So that's the status of, of that park. Again, if you have any questions, it's, it's a little hard. I'll, I'll get going and we'll pause. But does anyone have any questions about Veterans or Sundown Park? The next park is River Bluff, which is a really unique park. For a relatively short or small park, it had, has a wide variety of geographical features. The park was acquired by the township in the early 60s. It, the interesting thing about that, when, when I walked around that park, up, up on, there's two ridges there, I, I found what appeared to be some old structures. I, I talked to Chris Yoder and Jack Sheridan about that. They're the local historians. And Chris told me that was part of a farm. The farmhouse was on the east side of the interstate, and the interstate cut through the farm. And obviously, the state bought the property. When the interstate was completed, the township purchased 27 acres for about $3,000. So that's when the park was initially established. There, there was a gravel trail that led from Old Alleghen Road to the park, and the high ground where, where the parking area is, and the grass that, that we mow, mow at that time was not part of the park. That was acquired later. There, there was an older house there, and for about $23,000 and about $15,000 of a state grant, the township purchased additional 10 acres. They lanced, they removed the cottage landscape that, built a parking lot, and there's a swing set there. So, so that's the high ground off Old Alleghen Road, which was a good addition to the park. So now we have about a 37-acre park. There's a trail that goes down there, crosses two, two brooks, and follows the, the, the river and sort of the backwater that washes up in the swampy area, which would be on the east side of the park. The trail, the initial trail goes down to the river. A number of years ago, there was a grant, I could not find the date, when the shelter that's down there was, was built, along with the deck and the dock. In, in the last few years, we cleared the trail that runs down along the river, almost to the Blue Star Trail, the Blue Star Highway Bridge, the Interstate Bridge. It's a nice walk. It's a really unique view of the river, probably the best view, best, best public view of the, the river, that wide part of the river, east of the Interstate Bridge. So if you have not been there, it's, it's well worth it. The interesting thing, like I said, about that park is the topography. There's two plateaus. There's two small creeks that I, I assume were not there before, but they're more drainage off the, the interstate that drained down into that swampy area. They divide these two sort of plateaus that give you a great view of the river, especially in, in the fall and the winter, when the leaves are off the trees. The other thing that's nice about that park is the large trees that are there. I don't know whether it's old growth or second growth, but some, some of the large oaks, there's some really giant tulip trees along the trail that runs along the river. It's, it's really pretty. So I would encourage you to go there. There's another trail. We've built a second trail on, along the larger plateau that gives a great view of the river. And it's probably our most scenic park, certainly more scenic than the other two, although you can't beat the Lake Michigan view at Sundown Park. The next park is the Dog Park. The Dog Park, again, is, it's where that 911 tower is, at Dead End Street. I forget the, the name. I think it's 64th Street that runs down there, dead ends at the interstate. I can't find when that property was acquired, but I assume it, it was, again, property that was acquired by the state for the interstate. When the interstate was completed, the township got that property. And so it's set vacant until 2003, when the township received two donations, one of $20,000 and another of $4,000. And between 2003 and 2005, the Dog Park was constructed. The, the park, the partial where the park is, is about 40 acres. My guess is the park, the Dog Park itself, takes about 10 acres. The thing that's nice about the Dog Park is it's split into three different sections. A general area where the little gazebo is, we, we have some benches there and so forth. That's the most used section. We have some benches there and so forth. That's the most used section. It's got several big trees, so it's shady. And it's open. There are sand piles there. The dogs can run and dig. So there's a lot of dog type activity. The other nice thing about that park is we have another section of a small dog section or a timid dog section that doesn't want, that if you have a smaller dog that doesn't like to interact with the bigger dogs or you know, that you want to avoid any dog conflicts. I guess that's a separate section that, a little smaller, quite a bit smaller. Probably only about a quarter of an acre. But it's got a little shelter there too. And then we have another section that was originally set aside for like a special use section. It's not used much. We're thinking about combining that with a small dog section. We have three water stations there that allow the dogs to you know, you can water your dog if you want. A couple of years ago, that some of that area where the water faucets were got pretty muddy. We added a concrete base and also put some concrete around the gates. I'm going to speed up because I'm afraid I'm going to run out of time. The bike trail is, what was interesting about the bike trails is I found in a 1990 memo about the bike the bike trails is that the township over 10 years, the park commission allocated $30,000, $10,000 a year to begin work on the bike trails on the northern part of the township on Blue Star Highway. I'm not sure what was done. I was told the bike trail, that the old bike trail that ran down Blue Star, down Holland Street was completed in 2006. So that was the township bike trail before the Blue Star Trail idea had even begun to take shape. The Blue Star Trail section that's in the township was built. They chose the township in the north side of the township. Because a number of years ago, and I can't remember how many years ago it was. I went to a road commission meeting where Costco and Ganji's Township said they would not be responsible for the maintenance of the trail. Sawatuck Township said that once a bike trail was maintained based on our experience with the existing trail. That we could, within the parks budget, the township budget, afford to maintain the trail. So the Blue Star Trail folks decided to start the construction, the township. And the section between Maple Street, or actually between Old Alleghen Road and North Street was built. There was a proposal and a grant almost submitted when the city agreed to do an alternate route. At the last minute, that was withdrawn. And the section on North Street was not built or has not yet been built. That's where we are right now. I originally thought it would be done. So I could ride my bike from my house. I live off Blue Star to into town. The grandkids who I thought I would ride with are now in junior high school. And I'm not optimistic that the trail will get done anytime soon. But there's always hope. And that's just my commentary on the Blue Star Trail. There's also a park that I mentioned, Alamantra Park, that is a south four acres of the cemetery. That minutes that I gave you, they actually renamed it from South Cemetery Park to Amalancher Park. And Amalancher is a bush that grew on cemeteries and probably still does. But why it was planted was it was one of the first things to blossom in the spring. And that's when the gravediggers knew the ground was thawed enough so they could dig the graves for the bodies before they had backhoes to dig in the frozen ground. Goshorn Creek goes through there. It would make a great park. It's a sandy bottom. It would be a great place to put a picnic table. We hope to have a trailhead there. And we hope to have part of the North Street Trail go through there. We'll have to see what develops. That's a quick summary of our parks. Our parks are funded. I'll talk briefly about the funding. Our parks are funded out of the general fund. Department 751. A few years ago, the board set aside $100,000 in 408 Fund. A special projects funds for the parks. We've used that for some of our bigger projects, the roof at the shelter at River Bluff. The sidewalk, the first sidewalk in the township that we built in front of the Christian Reform Church to connect the city sidewalk with the bike trail. We had a lot of support from the church. They talked about how people were reaching the end of the bike trail there, which eventually it will continue down to Maple Street, which is the township city boundary. And they were walking out in the road and you know that crossing across Old Alleghen Road and Blue Star Highway. People go flying across there because it's a wide intersection and there's been a couple of wrecks there. So we felt like that was a good addition to the township and for the safety. The future of our parks. We have a five-year park plan. It was created a couple of years ago. We redo it every five years. Most of this five-year park plan talks about the bike trail. There's several sections of the bike trail that we had hoped would be completed before this five-year park plan expires, which I think is 2023. There's a couple of smaller projects on there, but every five years, we do a park plan. The park plan, in addition to giving us some goals, is critical for grants. The DNR requires that we have identified some of our goals and the park plan is mentioned. The grant requests are mentioned in the park plan. We can update the park plan anytime we want. So if a new item comes up. We're shortly, we can access this. The last item on my agenda is some of your, the planning commission goals. And this affordable housing, green space and parks. I think that there's some really good ideas there. Or ideas that can be developed along the Blue Star Corridor, because that's a third one. When I lived in Indiana, when a housing development was built or a new subdivision. Part of the planning involved some common areas that were set aside for the residents, basically anyway, it was public land. It never became part of the park commission. But I would love to see in your planning, when you have folks come to you for the proposed subdivision. That you talk and encourage them to set aside parcels that could become future parklands. The cities Sawatuck and Douglas do not have much vacant land. I believe that there's a lot of, a lot of opportunities really that could come from a need here for soccer fields, football fields, baseball diamonds. Pee-wee baseball. There's so many opportunities, but we don't have the money. The problem we ran into with grants is because of the area, it's hard to compete with Lake Michigan. The state park, all the other public lands that surround here. And because grants are awarded by points, we fall down in that area. It's hard to compete with some of the areas away from the lake that have, at least in the view of the state, a little greater need. So it comes back to us and how we can acquire this land. And you're certainly aware that around here, a five acre parcel, when I moved here 20 years ago. Was 30, 35,000. Today it's 85, 90,000. So property here has gone up a lot. That makes acquiring that property difficult. So in closing, I hope when you discuss some of these ideas with some of the folks that want to develop land here. And especially the affordable housing, that somehow we can include some public space in those developments. That concludes what I wanted to talk about. If you have any questions, please ask.
Jim, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions or any comments that they would like to make right now? Denise Shipley?
Yeah, Shipley here. I just have a quick question about the Alamantra Park. Is it, it's public? There's no trailhead, but is there any open to exploring that area? Or is it the sandy bottom area that I don't want to go?
The area is, you know where the well is. There's a building down there with a well. The township property runs all the way south to North Street. So right now that property is used for you know, the folks that work at the cemetery will have fill there. We've had the debt crew clear some of the land. In the spring, poison ivy seems to pop up there. But that area, if it's really in the corner where the creek comes under Blue Star. And if you walk behind that building, you can walk down there. It's certainly public land, township land. And just look at the creek, look at that area. It's really a pretty area. It has potential. It's small. Our idea was the bridge that the Blue Star Trail would use would cross that swampy area that's down there. And it would be a really nice feature for the trail. Then as the trail came up in the south part of the cemetery, there's enough area to make a picnic area. A few parking places. So it just has a lot of potential for a small area.
Thank you. I appreciate your explanation.
Down there and just walk around and don't
I'd love to check it out. I just didn't know it was an area that was, I honestly didn't know it was public space.
And if you go a little further down, you'll also notice the old interurban rail bed that's there. It's a raised bed, runs parallel to North Street, just on the north side of the street. A great place to put the trail.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Serin? Jim, I'd really like to say thank you for being here with us tonight. I think we all learned a lot. And it's our understanding that maps for all the parks are available on the township website. Is that correct?
Yes, in the park plan, our five-year park plan, which if you go to the Parks Commission, it's in our it's on the website, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. John, would you like to introduce our next speaker?
Sure, excuse me.
You've had a relationship and some contact with him.
No, 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 I was just, I was talking a lot all day on Zoom myself, so bear with me. No, I'm very pleased to introduce our next presenter tonight, who is Mark Rodman. As Becky said earlier, he's the executive director of the Michigan Historic Preservation Network. And quite an expert on anything to do with designating historic districts in a municipality. He was also one of the submitters of a letter and information to the township. I think it was back in October relative to many of the calls we received from the public and inquiries about potentially establishing a historic district in and around the Kalamazoo River mouth. So Mark and I spoke a few weeks ago and he's going to give us a bit of an overview tonight on what a historic district can be and the process. And he knows that we have been instructed, the planning commission by the board, to investigate this further and report back to the board with pros and cons on this process and on the potentiality of moving forward with it. So Mark, welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it. I'm glad to be here. To start off, I want to just talk a little bit about the current situation with the proposed marina at the Kalamazoo River mouth, just to talk about why we even want to discuss this particular subject in that regard. As you know, the people are looking to develop that area. They need a permit from the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers. And to get that permit, they have to go through the Section 106 review process. And with the Section 106 review process, what they're charged with doing is looking at the historic properties that are in this area. Determine if there is an adverse of that. And if so, try to get an agreement with all the people that are involved in this, be it township, the coastal alliance, my organization, the Native American tribes that are involved in those kinds of things. Agreement on how this development can proceed and protect those particular resources. And if they can't be protected, how do they mitigate that? But the thing about the 106 process that you may or may not know is that it asks people to have this conversation and ask them to come to an agreement. But there are many towns when there's an agreement that cannot be reached. And at that point, the Corps of Engineers can move forward how they want to without an agreement. Which means they can award the permit, they can deny the permit, they can move forward. But the only legal basis anybody has for going after them is they did not conduct the Section 106 review process properly. So when you're looking at what's going on now, there's a lot of ways to have conversations and input. But there's no way to really have an effect where you can say, this is what we want done and this is what we don't want done. And actually know that's the way it's going to be because you have the authority to do that. Now, as part of the 106 process, the Gun Lake Tribe went and they hired Algonquin Associates out of Portland, Oregon to come in and do a study on whether this area was a traditional cultural property for the Native American tribes. And if you look through that information, if you're familiar with that, you understand that that means the landscape and the way it's laid out and the features of the land and the growth and the animals and all that are historically important to them. And so when Algonquin did this study, they found that yes, this was something that could be a traditional cultural property. And therefore it was eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And 106 consultation would have to include that because anything that's eligible for the National Register of Historic Places will have to be included. So that's kind of where you're at now. So one of the things that can happen from the study that was done by Algonquin is somebody could go and write a National Register nomination and actually get that property listed as a traditional cultural property on the National Register of Historic Places. However, that in and of itself will not protect that property because it's eligible. Everything that you have to do to consider that is being considered already without it being listed. So there's no real change that happens to the 106 process if it would actually be listed. So, you know, what are other options and what other things can you do? Well, by Michigan State law, it's PA 169 of 1970. It enables local governments to create historic districts and it talks about how you do that. And then with those historic districts, you're able to regulate what happens within those historic districts based on the Secretary of the Interior standards. And I'll talk about those in just a moment. But it's really the only type of designation, this local designation, that actually gives you the power to regulate within the area. Through this enabling legislation by the state. So that's all great and fine, but how would one go about making this a local historic district? Because there's a process and that's outlined in PA 169 as well. And the first thing that has to be done is the township would have to pass a local historic district ordinance. And that ordinance would lay out exactly how a commission would be set up, how the commission would operate, what powers it would have and those types of things. Now Michigan's an interesting state because most states enabling legislation says basically you have the right to regulate for historic and cultural resources. Michigan's enabling legislation basically tells Michigan's enabling legislation basically tells you detail for detail what you have to have in your ordinance. So it's not like other states where you're like, okay, they said we can do this, we have to figure out how to do it. Basically, in Michigan, if you want to do it, they're telling you exactly how you have to do it to make it happen. If you're curious, Louisiana is the only other state that that does this. Anyway, so what they're going to tell you is when you you have to pass an ordinance, and that ordinance has to say that you have five to seven people that will serve as part of this commission, and they all have to have an interest in knowledge in historic preservation. That does not mean they have to have a degree in historic preservation, a degree in history, or anything like that. That means they have to have an interest. The one thing that you really do have to have is you have to have a licensed practicing architect on that commission, or you have to have tried to find one and proven that you haven't been able to do that after many successful attempts. So there's a way around that if you're not able able to do that. But you are required to at least spend some time looking for an architect to be on that commission. Once you have that commission set up, then it enables you the opportunity to start looking to set up historic districts. And the the way that you set up historic districts in Michigan is a little interesting because they do not let this commission that you just put together with your ordinance set up the historic district. What PA 169 says is you have to set up a study committee to look at an area to determine if it is able to be and eligible to be a historic district. Now, the one thing I'll tell you is there's nothing in state law that says you can't appoint the Historic District Commission to be your study committee itself. There's some communities that do that. There's other communities that go out and pull together a study committee each time they want to look at doing a historic district. But that's something that you guys can choose how how you want to go about that. So once the study committee is put together, be it the Historic District Commission or another committee, what they're charged with is is studying that area to determine, does it have the qualifications to be a local historic district? Well, if you're in particular looking at the mouth of the Kalamazoo River, that study committee is not going to have to do a whole lot of study because you've already got the study done by Algonquin Associates that says this can be a traditional cultural property, and you've got the National Park saying, Park Service saying, yes, it can be a national registered district. So therefore, there's some things you would have to add to that report, but very little work would have to be done as far as the study. So it's not like one of these things where you have to go do all this deep research and look at all the buildings and write up descriptions of them and all this kind of stuff, because somebody's already done that for you, which is which is very nice. And so you've got a head start on that. So you take the report that Algonquin has done, and you turn it into your study committee report. Once that report is finalized, you have to send that report to the State Historic Preservation Office and the Michigan Historical Commission for them to review and make comments. You also have to have, within sixty days of sending that to those two agencies, you also have to have a public meeting where this proposal is discussed. You can get comments for and against making this a historic district. There may be, somebody knows something about the property that, you know, wants to tell you more that you didn't know, or there might be somebody that's just there to object, or somebody saying, we've got to do this, whatever. But it is a public meeting for you to go through this through this study committee report and talk about what's happened. Once you've had that public meeting, and once you have gotten your reviews back from these two state agencies, you take that information, you might incorporate it and change it the way that you wrote the ordinance. I mean, that you that you wrote the study committee, and then you write an ordinance from that, which details, here's the boundaries of this historic district. Here's the important things in this historic district. This is what is there protect, and therefore you can go in and say, this is what's allowed in this historic district, and this is what's not. You know, so, you know, if you want to allow builders in historic district, you can talk about the heights and the massing and all that kind of stuff of anything that's built in there. If there's certain areas that you say you don't want anything built in, you can say, these areas are important because of such and such. So no, no construction will be allowed in these areas. There's all kind of different things you can do and lay out how you will manage that historic district. So you take the study information, why it's important, and you take how you're going to manage it, and you put that into an ordinance, and then you pass an ordinance. And that ordinance is therefore managed by the Historic District Commission going forward, where if somebody wants to do something in that property, they come before that commission to say, this is what we want to do. Can we do it, or can we not do it? Or, you know, how do we adjust what we're wanting to do in to fit where it works for what you guys have as protecting this district? So it gives you some teeth in what you're doing because that commission is the one that will regulate those kind of stuff. And most of the things that you can and can't do are pretty well laid out in in the information that PA 169 from the state of Michigan gives you. So you're not really, you're not going to be fishing for all that. Although I will tell you that, you know, currently there are no local traditional cultural property designations, which means you guys would be on the cutting edge. So this would be, when you're writing the ordinance and saying what couldn't couldn't be done, this is going to be different than somebody that has a bunch of historic buildings, be they're houses or commercial buildings, where there's so many people that did it, you already kind of know how to put that together. Yours will be a little more challenging in putting that together. And so that's how you would work through the process. The beauty of having Historic District Commission is that if there are other things in the community, not only are you dealing with the property that we're talking about at the mouth of the Kalamazoo River, you can designate other properties as historic and work with them. And there's some benefits to that. There's there's grants from the federal government that you can get. There is, there are tax credits you can get for work that you're doing on these properties, both from the federal government and the state, which added up together can give you forty-five percent of the cost of doing a project because the state is twenty-five percent, the federal is is twenty percent. So there's a lot of benefit to that. And then one other thing I'll mention, and then I'll let you guys ask questions, because this all makes sense to me, and it's all new to most of you, I'm sure. There is a program by the federal government called the Certified Local Government Program, which is basically your good housekeeping seal of approval for the way you set up your Historic District Commission. And those requirements are basically no different than the state requirements because Michigan's so strict. The only thing it requires is a report to the federal government that can pretty much be put together in an hour annually to tell them what's going on within your historic districts for that year. And the reason I mention all this is that if you become a certified local government, then there are grants that, they're federal grants, but they come through the State Historic Preservation Office to do surveys and inventory, to do rehab. If you've got an area that's historic that you want to do some marketing with, you can do that. So there's benefits that nobody else can get that are only available to the certified local governments through grants that you would be eligible for. One of the reasons I mention that is that, you know, if you did move forward with doing Historic District Commission and ordinance, and you wanted to try to get this mouth of the Kalamazoo River, the traditional cultural property listed. Well, one of the things you can get is a grant from the Certified Local Government Program to actually get the person that wrote the study originally on that area to show that it was eligible for the National Register, to get that individual to write your study committee report for that. So there's ways to do that. Now, I tell you that, but I also have to tell you that the next grant round is this fall, and the money for that would not be awarded until May or June of next year, and you can't do any work on the project until you get that grant. So the timeliness of that may not work for you. But I just wanted to mention that it was out there, and it was a possibility for something for you guys to think of. So with all of that, I think I've used up most of my time, so I'll I'll stop there and just see if you guys have any questions.
Commissioners, does anyone have a question? Denise Shipley?
Thank you, Shipley here. Of course I do, Becky. I've always got a question. I am curious about schools such as Western Michigan University that holds a cultural, environmental, and heritage management certificate. And if that would be worthwhile for us to try to communicate with some academia or something that has certifications in this, would would that make sense?
Well, you know, I think I think you're you're welcome to talk with those guys. What I will tell you is, they can tell you a lot of historic present about historic preservation. I am not sure how well versed they are in developing local historic districts. I don't know if that's something they work with on a regular basis. What I can tell you is there's a gentleman named Alan Higgins that works for the State Historic Preservation Office. And his sole job is to help people with historic district commissions and becoming certified local governments. So if you have specific questions on the process and how it works, Alan would be happy to talk to you. I'm not telling you not to talk to I'm just saying, I don't know what their expertise is in this particular item.
They, I'm just assuming they have graduate certificates in cultural heritage management. So I would assume graduate certificates. But I'm, one more time, Alan Higgins is with which organization?
He's with the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office.
All right. Thank you.
Mark?
Go ahead, Daniel.
It's just more of a technical question. I just kind of, I kind of got lost between the formation of the Historic District Committee and then the additional study board. So can you kind of explain, so we appointed an Historic District Commission. What what's that next step to get to that? The study committee?
Okay, well, you know, the first thing that you have to do is pass the ordinance, which tells how all of this works. And once you get that ordinance passed, the first thing you're required to do is report to to seat a Historic District Commission. Now, the interesting thing about that is that commission has nothing to do with designations, but you're required to seat that commission. But at the same time, there's nothing saying that you can't in parallel seat a study you know, commission. And so you can go ahead and put your study committee together at the same time. So it's not like before you do the study committee, you have to have the Historic Preservation Commission, but you can do both of those at the same meeting as long as one's done right prior to the other. So there's no like you have to wait, you know, for one to get seated and have a meeting and do several things before the next is put together. You just have to have the Historic District Commission appointed before you can appoint the study committee.
Got it. So only the study committee can can identify what would qualify as, or they can make recommendations of what would qualify as an historic district. And then once that's identified, that's kind of when the Historic District Committee kind of comes into play in in terms of regulating any kind of ordinance we have?
Right. The study committees only exists to designate and propose things for designation. Once that's done, all the other business that has to do with the Historic District is done by the Historic District Commission. So any, you know, review of any projects that are going on there, anything like that would be reviewed by the Historic District Commission. Historic, the the study committee, as I mentioned earlier, it can be put together for this one thing and then disbanded. It can be a permanent committee that you have, or you can always appoint the Historic District Commission as the study committee as well. So you have, that one you have a lot more flexibility with. The law does tell you exactly how you have to put together the Historic District Commission. The one thing, though, that you point out, I want to make sure that everybody understands is you cannot do a designation in Michigan without appointing a study committee. That absolutely has to be done.
And I have one more question. In the Algonquin study, did did that look at any other areas in the Kalamazoo in Sagittaw Township other than the river mouth, or did it just explicitly focus on the river mouth?
And it's, it focused exclusively on the river mouth because this is what they were, that was the concern. That's what they were charged to do.
Thank you.
I wrote down a couple of questions. This is Israel's here, and probably because I, like Daniel, was just kind of a little mixed up as we went along, because I was trying to write stuff down, and then I thought, what did I miss? So I, my one question was, can we join a tri-community endeavor? Or is that probably not, I I know that's probably not relevant because they have historic buildings versus, you know, we're looking at different things. But I just wanted to know if that's even a possibility.
You know, I have to tell you, I don't think there's anything in the law that prohibits that. I don't think there's anybody that has done that unless they've done it as a county commission. Because sometimes what happens is they're like, for instance, Washtenaw County has a county commission, and then several of the townships and the municipalities in that area sign on to let them regulate stuff within their their corporate boundaries. So there's a way to do it from a county perspective. If you guys wanted to gather and do that, I'm not sure if you just went over and wanted to take, you know, work with one and one of the other, you know, townships or municipalities, you could just do that. That is, it may have to be a county thing. I I can, I can have that looked into for you. I just don't know.
Thank you. And then I wondered, you said that we needed to have a licensed architect on the commission? Not on the study commission, but on the actual historic commission. Is that correct?
Historic District Commission. And again, you know, if for some reason.
Ad hoc, or does that person need to be a permanent member of that commission?
Well, you need to have somebody as a permanent member in that commission. However, there is a stipulation that, you know, if you've tried, advertised, you've worked, you try to get it, and somebody comes and says, I'm not going to be on there all the time, but I do it ad hoc. You could eventually get to that point. What that's going to do, though, is hold up your appointment of that commission for a while because you're going to have to show that you advertised over several months trying to make that happen. So that's the thing that's important is that you have to show you made a real genuine effort to find an architect. So it drags out the process if you don't just get one right away.
Okay. And then I just wondered too, your project manager or your person with that, is that often a paid position through the grant? Or do you see that as being a volunteer position?
Run that by me.
The project manager, the person that's overseeing, writing the grant, and kind of leading the study and leading the commission, is that usually a paid position?
Well, I will tell you, most cases, to be successful, it ends up being a paid position. But it doesn't have to be somebody that's exclusively paid to work for the Historic Commission. It can be somebody that's, you know, doing something else for your township that's capable of doing this. But that being said, there have been instances where, you know, there's smaller communities, and they just can't put this together themselves, so they hire a consultant to put together and to project manage it for it. Just as far as the grants from the federal government, to give you an example, I'm from Colorado, and so I'm, and I actually work for the State Historic Preservation Office, working with the commissions there. And they have a small town that has fifty-nine people in it. They have successfully got a number of grants through the CLG program, but they did that through hiring a consultant to put that information together because they they didn't have the capacity as a city because they had one and a half employees, and they didn't have a volunteer that felt comfortable doing that. So that's how they did it. So, you know, I think there's, you know, all kinds of ways to put that together. I just think what you've seen, you know, happen in most cases has been somebody that's on staff with a particular municipality township or whatever, but that doesn't have to be that way.
Okay. I I just wondered, because I'm familiar with doing grants both ways, and sometimes it works really well to have a project manager. But I didn't know if you needed to include that cost in with your grant request, and if that's even allowable. So that's what I I sort of wondered. And then one other question I had, this is a little off subject, but are trees ever considered historic?
They are, in particular, when you're looking at a traditional cultural property such as this. It can be. Now, for instance, if you just had one big tree that you wanted to go list as, you know, being historic, you you're not going to be able to list just the tree. You'd have to list the property and tell why the property is important, and tell why this tree on the property is important, blah, blah, blah. But there's many places where when they designate a historic district, well, they'll designate the street trees as being historic as well, because if somebody goes in there and starts mowing them down, well, you suddenly change the entire character of the historic district. So they do actually regulate the trees and the streetscape, and maybe some of the digital properties as well.
Well, thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions for our guests this evening? Mr. Rodman, I'd like to thank you very much for being part of our discussion tonight. You've given us a lot to think about, and we really appreciate that. We've been talking about this for a while, and as John said, the board has told us, it's um, it's up to us to study this. So we appreciate you being here.
I'm glad to be here, and I'm happy to talk with you guys. Again, I did provide John with a number of materials that I don't know if he shared with you guys at this point. One of the things is a training manual that my organization puts out that talks about how to run a Historic District Commission. But as part of that, it talks about the formation of the commission. It talks about the formation of the study committee. And since we're going to be brief tonight, I didn't pull and put together slides for this, but that has images and discussions that may be helpful for you.
Thank you. That would be very helpful.
Yeah, Chairman Israel's just, I was waiting until we had the presentation tonight, so I can forward these on to you, and if we assign this to the Rural Character and Conservation Subcommittee. A lot of information.
Lot of information. And I know you did share that you had information, John, with us earlier, so I appreciate that.
And I do just want to mention, because I guess Miss Daniel asked this question. There has been some interest from some city, Sagittaw City Council members because of the fact that the city of Sagittaw owns most of the property to the south of the river at the mouth.
Okay.
That that's all I know. I don't know if they've just. That, that's all I know. I, I don't know if they've discussed it formally yet, but there's been some inquiries and, and interest to potentially working with the township if we were to go that route.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you again, Mr. Rodman. You too. Um, I would please let the record reflect that Mr. Welk joined us probably about 20 to seven, quarter to seven. Is that right, Denise? Or is that right, Linay?
I don't know.
Mr. Welk joined us right at the beginning of Mr. Sering's presentation, so.
Okay, next on our agenda is public comments, item number six. And the Planning Commission requests that speakers respect the three-minute timeframe unless you're speaking for a larger group, then you are allowed five minutes to speak on behalf of that group. Please remember that it's not a, a question and answer session, but we do welcome hearing your comments and we appreciate that you've joined us this evening. All right, it's your opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Planning Commission. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the Planning Commission this evening?
I would.
Becky, I'll do the three-minute for you.
Our first speaker that we're recognizing is?
My name is Betsy York. I live in Douglas. Do you need the address?
That would be great, Betsy.
I live at 143 Harbor Court in Douglas.
Thank you.
Chairman Israel, members of the Town Planning Commission, and Linay, nice to meet you here. We've chatted in the past. Well, for all the work you do, I'm critical. There are just some thoughts that I've been encouraged to share a little bit. I realize I'm probably speaking to many members of the choir and hopefully with a vote later on, I'll be seeing with some of you in the near future. But these comments are not related to any particular agenda item, just as in sharing with you. One of the delights of living in this area is the wildlife and I fear this current demand for housing will displace many animals and destroy a lot of trees and habitat, which will not be based. This can have an impact on a special draw for visitors who, like many of us, come from cities where stars and animals are hard to find. Let's not continue to destroy trees and think the animals will find someplace else to go. The trees will grow back. The presence of animals in our daily lives makes our lives richer. The continuous canopy of mature trees makes our towns and cities visually appealing and healthier for us all. I have not found in any of the plans of the three municipalities, any plan for, what plan, actual plan, there's talk, but no plan for wildlife corridors or intentional purchasing of land for habitat. I'd be delighted to be mistaken. Getting funding is challenging, but if you don't ask, you don't get it. And if there was a plan, then funding could be obtained in some manner over a period of time. I see in your visioning exercise this year, earlier this year, that you have, quote, "open land with a potential for growth," unquote. And why is our response to open land always about growth? Please consider urban growth boundaries and develop plans for keeping some of the open land for wildlife. While I'm talking about trees, animals and habitat, I would also like to put forward the notion of, say, natural landscapes. And this would include stronger dark sky fixture requirements on private property, which helps nocturnal animals without sacrificing security or safety. And how did we become anchored to the lawnmower? Do we need to clear cut our property to build a house? Not necessarily. Do we need to put in a lawn? I do not think so. This is a visual choice landowners make. As part of a natural landscapes concept, I would love to see unkempt front yards filled with native and flowering plants. This is a cultural change that is beyond your authority, but not beyond your leadership via suggestion and encouragement. Thank you for your time and all your good work. I'm going to have to run too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I see Richard Kirk has his hands up, his hand up.
Mr. Kirk, please.
Thank you. My name is Richard Kirk. I live in Muskegon. But I do spend about two days a week down in Sagittuck and, and had the pleasure of knowing the community for 40 years or so, family friends with someone who lives there now. I'm not speaking to anything that's on the agenda. I am speaking to urge the Planning Commission to revoke its resolution of April 2020, allowing Van Horns to construct a pond and engage in sand mining. That's the site between Blue Star Highway and 66th Street, I believe it is. I urge you to revoke that permission because Van Horns have already failed to comply with two significant conditions that you set out in that April 2020 approval. And I imagine the board or the commission doesn't have this specifically to paragraph B1 of the April Resolution and B5. Paragraph B1 states that the owners, the Van Horns, have to obtain all required federal, state, county, and local permits and approvals needed to conduct the mining operation and create the proposed pond and shall comply with all terms and conditions of those permits. And paragraph B5 says that the pond excavation on the site shall not exceed five acres until the Van Horns submit to the township a copy of a Part 301 permit issued by the, the Michigan Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. Part 301, that's Part 301 of the Michigan Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. On April 9th of this year, the, uh, the Department Eagle found that the Van Horns were in violation of that Part 301, that they had constructed a pond greater than five acres in, without obtaining a permit. So specifically that paragraph B5, Eagle has now found that the Van Horns just went ahead and built bigger than five acres, which is disallowed by Part 301. It is, it is disallowed certainly by your resolution of last year. I understand that surveys have shown that this lake, this pond is now nearly seven acres. In doing this, it, there's also concerns that have been formally raised with Eagle that the Van Horns basically flattened this property before they applied for permits, before they had done environmental impact studies and had environmental impact statements prepared for their sand mining permit. And their excuse is, well, it's already flattened, so we don't have to give you an environmental impact statement. To me, that amounts to the destruction of, or the destruction of evidence. There is no evidence now of how this property existed before, what the environment was, what this impact would be. They have exceeded this five acre limit in violation of your resolution, in violation of the statute. So I urge you to revoke it. To me, it's a problem more than just the, the Van Horn project itself. Without revocation, without
We're at three minutes.
Okay, thank you. You're inviting, you're inviting the next applicant to the commission for any zoning variations, versions that that they really don't have to worry about what you say. They can go ahead and do what they do with impunity. Thank you very much for allowing me to go over. Thank you for considering this. I know you'll, you'll give it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk.
Roy McElwain.
Roy. Becky, I see that Roy was raising his hand.
The chair recognizes Mr. McElwain.
This Roy McElwain, 3466 Riverside Drive Township. Just take a few seconds to remind everybody, I think there may be a new member on the PC. Going back over what Richard Kirk mentioned, the original pond permit was pulled way back, probably three, I don't remember the exact day, three plus years ago. The ordinance for the township has is on your agenda tonight and sure needs to be looked at. Because we went through a yeast, at least a year and a half of building, of digging, wound up with our 70-foot mountain, 70-foot plus mountain, wound up with a pond that exceeded the 4.9 acres that was requested in the permit for the obvious reason that he was avoiding going to the state agencies. Because once you exceed 4.9, you need the state permits. After getting the mountain, then he applied for a SAU to the township and that we participated as residents in two meetings, one of them in person and the next one as a Zoom meeting. At which time, Mr. Van Horn specifically said he had to have, he wanted to have, he was passionate about water skiing and he wanted a private water skiing pond. Of course, he's laid out all the lots and now he's selling lots with water access available to everybody. If you talk to any Realtor, that's what the story is. Then he turns around, gets his SAU, which Richard Kirk very well just went through all the requirements and ignored them and cleared the land instead of getting his state permits, flattened it and staged all that sand for future sand mining, which he didn't have permits for. The crowning blow is he puts his house up for sale for his private water skiing pond. Apparently, he's not going to stay there. I know that's not a legal issue, but it sure leads to deception. Now, I sent a letter in and I'm not going to go through those points, but I just wanted to add one more brick to this, this house. And that is that the county health department, two weeks ago, issued him a formal violation notice. And that violation notice said he had to start remedial action with, they call them erosion mats to prevent that sand erosion that's been happening and affecting local businesses along Holland Street. He had a week to start something. He has not been in contact with the county health department. He did not start any work on the erosion control. And it's just another example of bad faith.
You're at three minutes.
Thank you. That's all I need to say.
Thank you, Roy.
I see John Johnson has his hand up.
Mr. Johnson, you have the floor.
Hi there. Oh, sorry. Thank you so much. Is, I'm, I'm trying to turn the camera on real quickly. I was just gonna show something here too. Is the camera working?
Your audio. Working, John. Let me, let me see what I can do.
Okay, thanks so much. I appreciate it.
It should, it should work for you. There you go.
Oh, there we go. Hey. Thank you all for your leadership. I, I, I love Sagittuck. It's been great. You guys are doing awesome. I honestly, everything's been going great here. I live right across the street from you guys at the township office. I've, I've met a, a number of you and just speaking to the sand, I've never really gotten involved here except for almost a year ago. We started to have sand blow on the property. And I mean, I'm just gonna kind of walk outside because it's literally across the street. And it's been kind of crazy. Last year around October, November, you know, we had the gales of November coming in and the cars were getting all covered with sand. I don't know if you can see across there. It's like literally for blocks, like right there, it's just piles of sand. And even like when we just had it, um, a couple of days, days ago, woke up in the morning and we had high winds and that little bit of snow that came with, mixed in with water. And there was again, sand all over the cars and stuff. And this is something we never dealt with before. Lots of cleaning around the window sills and around the garages and such. So just brief, that's, I'm sure you've probably heard this before, but we're getting lots of sand coming in. It's the rollers on the windows and like slider doors, you know, sand can get caught up in air shortening lifespans of things. So that's it. Honestly, just making you aware. I don't know what, if anything, can be done. I would just really like to see this nuisance of all the excess sand come, come to an end. The only other thing I want to add is it's still water. I mean, I used to live in Fenville in Sagittuck Township on Blue Star Highway for a while too. So I know I had a pond in back there and they need to be kind of like maintained. And I don't know what they're doing in terms of mosquito control or pests, but you got to keep that water moving. You know, to keep those things under control too, because it's a very large body of still water as, as well. But those are just comments and I know that all of you and, and your leadership and everything that you, you kind of inherited a little bit of, a little bit of a, a mess and you're all trying to do, to do your best. And anyway, I don't want to ramble. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you are doing. I feel like we live in one of the best, best places to live in Michigan. And, but lately, it's almost felt like Singapore a little bit, you know, but instead of having the trees removed and, and the topsoil pulled off, it's kind of just been purposefully removed. We have very large live sand dunes created right across the street, covering blocks and it's blowing all over the paths and, and everything we have wins. So that's my, you know, my comment, you know, the sooner we can do something about turning the live sand dunes into dead sand dunes again, the better. I learned about that all when we took my first dune buggy ride here in Sagittuck many, many years ago. But anyway, those are my comments. Thank you for all you're doing. And if there's anything we can do to return these sand dunes to being dead sand dunes instead of live sand dunes, we would, we would greatly appreciate it. And I speak for my neighbors on the block as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Linay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to us this evening?
If anybody does, if you could raise, well, Richard Kirk is raising his hand. Oh, nope, it just went down.
I can't figure.
I see. Yeah. Hi, Scott.
Hi, couldn't figure out how to raise my hand. But it sounds like you can hear me all right.
We can, yeah.
Can you state your name?
Yes, Scott, wearing, uh, address is 6618 Dugout Road, Sagittuck Township. I just want to first say, I know earlier in the meeting, it was referenced about some emails that you just got tonight or whatever. And I had sent an email on, I think, March 23, which was the date required to get something on the agenda. And I thought that that was going to be included in the communication that you guys received. I don't know if it was or not. And then I also sent another email, a follow-up email after the state informed us all that the, the Eric, area of the pond was 6.7 acres. And that was sent on April 22, so four days ago. So just a matter there. I just wanted to say that I'm disappointed that
It was in the packet.
Both, both of them?
Not your most recent because the packet had gone out, but the, your letter from row one, yeah.
Okay. Anyway, yeah, I'm just, I'm disappointed that the water ski project isn't on the agenda tonight. I feel that it's the Planning Commission and Township Board's duty to protect the interests of the township and it's not the state's duty. Although the state has obviously a role in this whole project. But now that the state has handed the information about the size of the pond to you basically in a platter, I don't see how you have any option other than to call a hearing, which I understand is the process to review and then terminate the SAU that you gave Mr. Van Horn based on what I feel is a fraudulent application. Any contractor worth his salt, I mean, I can see a 10% error, but a 36% error in size, that's intentional. The citizens, as Mr. Johnson has mentioned, have been harmed. I feel I've been harmed my well for a period of time. We were getting really bad water out of it. And then just the unsightliness of this huge pile to anybody, any, you know, anybody who relies on any, you know, anybody who relies on the resort nature of Sagatuck. And then I guess, I don't know how your rules of order work for a meeting like this, but if it's permitted, I would love to see, you know, a commission member ask for a barrier item and add it on there that you make a motion that a special hearing is called to terminate the SAU. There have been so many violations. I don't know how you can't. And your obligation isn't just to one person, a developer who just moved into the area recently over all of the residents who have lived here for years. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waringa. Laney, is there anyone else that would like to speak to us this evening?
Does anybody else want to raise their hand or unmute?
I have a question for Mr. Waringa. This is Shipley. When he was saying he has bad water in his well, can you, Mr. Waringa, can you give us a little bit more information about the bad water in your well, please?
Yeah, I didn't realize it at the time because I wasn't you know, putting two and two together, but after there was like a water report done that showed like how the flow of the water goes and it kind of goes from the northeast to the southwest. And I'm kind of south and west of, of the area. And so my understanding from reading the report is when they did all this digging of the pond that's there, that disturbed the, the water, you know, underneath. And for probably a period of two or three months, I'm on a well out here and I'm one of, I'm actually probably, I think it might be the closest well to the project. Maybe there's one closer, but I'm, I'm one or two closest to it. And for a period of several months, anytime we would turn our water on, we were getting sand. I would go to make a tray of ice cubes in my white ice cube trays and they were yellow. And I actually had my water tested and there was, you know, they didn't report anything like that would be harmful for us drinking it. So I was like, okay, whatever. I would just, it's like, we come out here on the weekend. So every time I'd come out, I'd just have to, you know, run my water for a while to get it to run clear. And that's why I'm really concerned about any future project, because I don't want that to happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Waring. I appreciate your time.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mate, it's John. I just make one quick, quick comment too. In dealing with ponds and mosquitoes and such too, I could see them, since they have homes and stuff, trying to treat the pond for mosquitoes using chemicals. And that is, that is a concern also because I believe that that pond is roughly two thousand feet or maybe one to two thousand feet from our Sagatuck Township water plant as well. So I don't know if they're planning on doing it, but mosquitoes will need to be addressed at some point by them and when you have ponds and it's new. And the easiest way to treat that is by putting these little chemical things in there that take care of them. But keep in mind, it's very close to our Sagatuck Township water source as well. That's it. I just wanted to add that in there.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
No problem. Thank you so much.
Laney, is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? At this time, I would like to close the public comments and move on to item number seven, which is correspondence. And Laney, would you like to speak to the correspondence we've received?
Yes, and I already mentioned the one letter, just verifying, but several letters are in your packet, including an email chain from the first of April with members of the Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Lions, David Swan, Scott Waringa, with images. I also have included a letter from John Williams from April fourteenth, as well as Mary Turzino. And then today you received correspondence from Roy McElwine, Marsha Sikora and Scott Waringa. Thank you.
Thank you, Laney. Item number eight, new business. First of all, I guess we are going to talk about the members that are on the master planning commission, the committees. And so I guess we'll just kind of start with each individual committee. Is that okay? Or would you like to go through the membership? I think it keeps changing. And so I, I'm not really sure what to do about this, but Dave, would you like to start talking about the Blue Star Safety Commission? And that's kind of a, an offshoot of the Blue Star Committee, is my understanding. Is that correct? Oh, you're muted, Dave. You're muted. Okay, there you go.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know how that even happened. Okay, so I, I've had, so as far as the Blue Star Committee goes, we were going to break it down into two different sections. The first one is one that we're discussing right. We're actually, rather than Blue Star Safety, we were thinking about calling it Blue Star Transportation and Mobility Committee so that, you know, we can kind of move in people as well as traffic. You know, and be able to discuss that. So and what I've, what I've done is at, to this point, I mean, I had conversations with Joe, our tangent manager and, and I'd kind of discussed how this would all happen. And I've, so I've approached a couple of people at this point. For this section, Stacy Aldrich and Brenda Marcy and myself are kind of where we're at right now as far as committed committee members. And those are the people that I'd like to at least put on the, the list for, I think how we're doing this is the board ultimately has to approve the members of the committee.
That's something I'm going to verify. I was referring, I mean, reviewing our planning commission bylaws, section one point one, it says that the planning commission elects chairperson secretary from its members and creates and fills such other committees or offices as it may deem advisable. So I can just firm that up with the manager. For now, I mean, I think we can appoint the rosters for the different committees tonight ourselves. And then if the board needs to do a follow-up action, they can. But I think it's still kind of make that, create the roster and make the motion for each one of these committees.
Okay, then at least for tonight, then like I would like to, you know, propose you know, for the Blue Star Transportation Mobility Committee, that'd be Dave Eily, Stacy Aldrich and Brenda Marcy. And then once we've established that, then we'll, we'll take the next step and, you know.
Okay, so no John, no Denise and no Lori.
Not at this point.
Okay.
Sorry, is Dave free to add Lori Goshorn at another time or no?
I am. In fact, I had the conversation with Lori and she, and that, that was kind of where we left it. Is that she kind of wants to, we'll, we'll see how this thing all lays out and she's going to, I'll, I'll have a conversation with her and if she feels that she can add to this committee, you know, with her, with her knowledge and professional, then, then, you know, she'd gladly join on, but she's just not quite sure how it's all, you know, going to work out. And quite honestly, we're, we're kind of feeling our way through this whole thing. So I get it. And, and, and Lori's kind of waiting out there to see if, you know, if she's.
Okay, I just, I, I just wondered. I think my other question is that when we originally set these up, we were under the impression we could have community members in and, you know, now I'm not quite sure that that's still the impression of our new township manager. So it's, you know, there is some unclarity for people who are starting the committees.
Let's try to clarify all that tonight. These are appointments of the planning commission. So I think we're going in the right direction here.
And I, I feel like, I think that there are, I mean, there are still openings here and, and positions that are people that we would, you know, fill into the committee that are, that are just, you know, that are public residents and not, not on the planning commission. Honestly, just haven't got to that point yet. So.
Okay, thank you, Dave. And then so economic development.
Dave, do you want me to speak to that?
Yeah, yes.
Because Dave and I met about a month ago and we've been brainstorming and inviting people and talking to people. Right now, Dave and I are definitely on as well as, and I didn't write down, what's your last, what's Kim's last name? How do you say it, Dave?
Z D Y B E L, I think.
It's, it's a tough name. But anyway, Kim Z, let's call her Kim Z, who manages the Big B Coffee, was, is thrilled to participate. We feel very strongly that there should be more than one representative from the actual business community, business owners that their business is either in the township or they live in the township. I had invited someone, I guess I won't name him because we went back and forth for two weeks. I was certain he was going to say yes, and then he said, he just couldn't make the commitment. But I do have another invitation out again to a business owner. Their business is in the city, but they live in the township. And I think they'd have a unique perspective because they've got, they're part of the tourist area. And so that's where we are right now. It's Dave, me and Kim. And I'm hoping to hear from this other person. And as soon as I do, I will share that information. But I'm also open to let, you know, we don't have to throw out names now, but if, if any members of planning commission or members of the audience listening tonight have suggestions on people that are in the business community already, let me know because we want this to be a vibrant, exciting group here and we're anxious to get started, but we, we need some more people involved.
Great. Thank you, John. Any questions for Dave or John at this point from anyone else?
I did check the spelling. It's Z D Y B S M boy E L.
I was right.
Yeah, but how do you pronounce this question? I'll ask her. Thank you, Laney, for looking that up.
That's a good guess. Okay, and Daniel, you would be discussing rural character this evening, right, in conservation?
Yes. So I, I have confirmation from, from each one of the people listed under my, my committee. So it would be John and Denise Shipley, who are both planning commissioners right now. John Vanderbeek, Jane Dickey, Mark Sina Moore, and then Betsy York, who actually spoke tonight. Betsy York is the only member who's actually from Douglas. But I think that she can add some expertise that we're lacking. And I, I kind of like the idea of having somebody who is in a neighboring community. Because they can give us some insight as well, especially because the township in terms of its geography is, is so diverse and we do share some similarities with the topography of Douglas, especially near the lake shore. But I think a lot of, a lot of these members are coming to the table with some very specific interests, which I love. We are going to take the strategy that was laid out by Chairperson Israel's and, and the township manager and kind of, you know, first take a look at the master plan and the Parks Commission master plan and see if we can identify some larger goals and objectives and kind of work from there. But, you know, I think that we're also going to be looking at it from the specific, you know, interest of, you know, of the, the members. And I know that there's some things that we're going to have to hit upon. We've gotten a lot of comment, the public comment at the, you know, from the planning commission and at the board meetings concerning tree ordinance. There's this issue now that we're going to be taking up or taking a look at about historic districts. So I'll probably reach out to John for that information. And we'll definitely be looking forward to, you know, the public coming in and, and weighing in. Because these are, you know, we're going to be looking to make recommendations for, for zoning changes. You know, which really do affect, you know, the way we live and future projects. So very much hope that, you know, you know, even if you are not an official member, that you're more than welcome to listen in on our meetings and, and ask questions and participate in public comment. But that's kind of where I'm at right now. I know that Joe is still working on the backend of things. And I want to be compliant with the Open Meetings Act and do things right. So I have my email set up and I'm just kind of waiting for Microsoft Teams to get off the ground. So we can hold those public meetings.
Thank you, Daniel. Is there any questions for Daniel at this point? From anyone? It sounds like you have a good representation of a lot of people that are involved in the community too. Laney, do we need to have an approval of these committees and committee members tonight from the planning commission? At this point, and before I go even to attainable housing, because there is no one representing that at this point, do we need to approve these three committees?
Yes, I think it would be great to get a motion and support for the roster that you have discussed. I, I did, Madam Chair, recognize that we do have a new member, Denise. I don't want to put you on the spot. But if one of these does sound like something you'd like to dig in with the rest of the planning commissioners, we can add you at this time. We've been talking about this for several months and the purpose is that every five years, as you know, the township has to just review its master plan. It doesn't have to change the master plan, but it does review it. And so part of this review process is the creation of these committees that will look at the master plan, compare the master plan goals and objectives with the zoning ordinance rules that we have, since the ordinance is our best tool for implementing the master plan. And then make recommendations, if there are any, to amend or, you know, amend the zoning ordinance. And those recommendations would help direct staff to prepare amendments to the zoning ordinance and kind of give some parameters to what those amendments might be. So it's a, it's a working group. The groups will meet, I mean, potentially soon in person. But before that, we have set up Microsoft Teams for collaborating and on those teams, people can post documents, you know, review documents, shared documents so that they're in a repository to maintain transparency for open meetings. So I know that's probably a little bit more than any we needed, but I, I did want to bring you up to speed. And then of course, you know, you're welcome to join any of those committees.
Thank you. You know, I'm happy if there's a place realizing that, you know, I'm, I'm coming late to the, to the, the group. And certainly when I was at Union Township, I was part of our sidewalk and pathways committee and, and understand that the importance of safety as we go across and creating sidewalks and pathways and how to get across highways that are quite busy. We had a state highway come through Mount Pleasant and it's, it's a challenge. So, you know, if, if Dave or John thinks that something might, I might be able to assist with the Blue Star Safety, I'm happy to, to join that committee. I, I know that you, in your discussion that, that you're set with that. So, and I certainly understand that. And since you don't have anybody on attainable housing, not that I'm really that versed on that, but I'm happy to learn. So if there's a need for to start in regards to the attainable housing, I'd be happy to, to join that group.
Thank you. What would be your preference? Thank you. What would be your preference?
Uh, I I really, I could, I can tell you, I really don't have a particular preference, so, you know, again, as you're trying to. Uh, get, uh, if attainable housing is something that, uh, that I might be able to assist with, I'm happy to go on to that committee.
Well, I think you just sort of led us into a segue that, um, maybe it is time to discuss this. This number eight A four, because, um, we, it it's one of the most important things that we're going to be. Looking at, and we really don't have anyone who's going to take leadership on this team at this time.
Well, I can't sit, tell you that I'm gonna be your strong leader as, again, I'm I'm very new to this. Community, but certainly I I'm willing to, you know. If there's someone else, I wouldn't know who else would be appropriate within this community that really has, uh, more knowledge. But I'm more than happy to be part of that group.
Dave, you wanted to say something?
I was gonna say, I. I was, I sat on the, uh, the initial attainable housing, uh, committee that was kind of informal and, but it was with. With, uh, Bill and Ed and myself, and I I think Jim, uh, Searing was actually, uh, gonna be sitting in on it as well. And that, I know that kind of fell apart with some of the, you know, with.
They're leaving.
Bill leaving and, you know, and and so. And I'm happy to continue to sit on that committee, but I'm not in a position really to to chair it. Uh, I I just don't have the time, but I am happy to to put time into it and volunteer for, uh. For that committee.
Um, does, does anyone else have any thoughts about that committee at this time? I think, John, you had some thoughts a few months ago. Can you remember those?
I think that was more along the lines, because this is one area, you know, where we, uh, the planning commission. Several months back, and I think the board endorsed this notion of directing staff of. A zoning administrator to to start reviewing pertinent ordinances that may be need adjusting to allow for. More attainable housing, different lot and housing house sizes. Um, secondary building, buildings and such, and there was talk, and we had a presentation at that time, both the board and the planning commission. From Housing Next and Ryan Kilpatrick. And I think there was thinking that, well, that'd be a good starting point if he can get more involved with us, and I think that that's still a question mark. I know there've been overtures going back to him, so I I think that might be what you were referring to. And we felt like that was in the works before we actually named a potential subcommittee.
Well, and I have a question on that, too, because would it be appropriate to ask the ZBA to, and as a group to look at? Or identify zoning. Um, ordinances that might be amendable before we put that all on a staff person, recognizing that. The staff person, if it's Linay, she only has four hours a week with us, is that correct? I mean, is there another way to get the information we need without putting that on somebody who's very, very part-time their shoulders?
You could certainly ask them if there's interest from them. It's an interesting point.
Is there someone on zoning that would? Be appropriate to look at that, too? Or maybe be on this commission, and then the commission undertakes that?
Denise, you had your hand on.
Uh, I just, within the packet, it shows my name on the Blue Star Safety Committee, and I would like to respectfully move my name from the paper. Uh, from the packet, just so that it appears that it is not filled with three planning commissioners. Um, I'm not interested, thank you. I'm happy to, um. And I, I won't, I'm not saying I'm not interested, that's the wrong way to phrase that. Um, I think that I have enough on my plate at the moment, and I would like to open that position up to somebody else, so.
Denise, I think that already happened.
That already happened.
Oh, I heard, I did hear Dave say two names around it, but on my packet, I have my name listed.
But that, that, we're amending those.
We're amending that, we just.
Apologize, then I missed, um, I'm, maybe I misunderstood what was going on.
Yeah, that's okay.
But you could be on attainable housing.
I think Denise is telling us that her plate is full. Go ahead, Dave.
And unfortunately, I I don't remember his name. I only met with, he was only in the meeting one time, but we did have another member that had joined. Tenable Housing.
Harry Adams.
Harry Adams.
That's right, and he's on the ZBA, I believe. So that may be the, that may be the person that you're looking for.
Is Harry on the ZBA or is?
He is.
He's an alternate.
He's an alternate. Um, we have a meeting on the fourth. I don't know, we don't need him as an alternate, but sometimes he does attend.
Okay. Would he be, um, that's probably not wise to say, would he be a good person to lead that? That's probably not. But I wonder if.
You're worth asking.
And Denise.
Uh, yeah.
No, the other Denise.
Oh, I'm sorry, apologize.
I'm sorry, Denise Webster. Would that be a group that you could possibly lead? And, um, because you have had experience in both areas, planning and zoning, and if we put the right people. On that committee, would that be something that you would in take on?
I could give it a try.
Okay. That that makes us very happy. It's a very important committee. I would be happy to be on that committee, too. I would be, but I don't want to lead it, thank you. But I would support you in every way possible, but I do think Harry Adams is a good person to. To consider on there, and Jim Searing really had a passion for it. And so, uh, Dave, you have some of the history of the team. So it looks like, and Ed, um, would you like to weigh in on that, too? Would you like to remain on that? Committee, or are you thinking that you would like to be removed from it? Um, Ed, you're. Probably muted. Or Mr. Welk, is he still with us?
Yeah, he is. Ed, are you able to unmute? I know I muted you once, um, through background. Hi, Ed. Ed.
Okay, well, we can just go on, and, um. At this point, thank you very much, Denise Webster, for sharing that. And, um. It looks like you'll have Jim Searing, Dave Eyle, Harry Adams. And Becky Israelis also on your team.
So Becky, has Jim, has he said yes, if someone asked him?
Yes, he said yes a while ago. He, um, actually called and volunteered several months ago to do this. He's really interested in it.
No, I missed that. I missed that, thank you.
Oh, um, well, he called me, and so I think this will be good. So that's good. Okay. Um, any other discussion about these teams? Okay, Denise Webster, um. Will need to get you set up. Uh, with Jill Frye. With a program that he'll put on your computer. To use in documenting and going through this, but maybe we can meet with him next week.
Okay. I I can figure out something either this week, later this week, or next week, that's fine.
Okay, I could actually do it later this week, too. I won't be here next week, so. Or you can meet with him by yourself. I I don't really need to be there, but I am excited that you're doing this. Linay, do you have any final thoughts on this?
I'll just run through the names, if that's okay.
Yes, okay.
So for Blue Star Transportation and Mobility, Dave Eyle. Denise Webster, Stacy Aldrich, and Brenda Marcy. For Economic Development, Dave Eyle, John Helmrick, and Kim Zival. For Rural Character and Conservation, Daniel DeFranco, John Helmrick, Denise Shipley, John Vanderbeek, Jane Dickey, Mark Saint Amour, and Betsy York. And Attainable Housing, Denise Webster, Dave Eyle, Harry Adams, Jim Seerling, and Becky Israelis.
Yes, that's what I have.
Oh, uh, Lin, Lin, did you put me on the, uh, Blue Star Safety as well?
I did, I did. Do you only want to be, you can only be on, if you only, if one is enough, that's great, too.
Well, I I thought I heard from Dave and John that they had enough people on that committee.
Okay.
And John?
We didn't say that.
No, I think you'd be great out there.
I'm happy to be on it. I I'm I'm sorry, I I misunderstood that then.
So you're on Blue Star Transportation and Mobility.
I'm happy, I'm happy to be involved, I'm happy.
We can only have three planning commissioners, because if we have four, then we're at a quorum, so as long as we're three and under, we're good to go.
Okay.
Okay.
That's just two, right?
Oh, yeah, Dave, Denise. Yeah, John, you're not on that one.
Right.
Denise. Stacy and Brenda. And possibly Lori Goshorn in the future.
Yeah, just to remind everyone who may not realize this or remember, uh. My colleague on the board, Brenda Marcy, is the board representative to the County Road Commission, so.
I know, so she's a good person.
Connection, I mean, yeah.
Is anybody interested, is anyone from the transit system, the the inner urban, uh, have they been approached?
That's interesting.
Good idea.
Ellis was in the office yesterday, the head of the inner urban.
Yeah, I've been working with her on a sign, um. You know, I, so we don't have to keep updating this. I mean, we could, what we could do is we could put in here. I believe we could do this. We could say member of inner urban.
Okay.
Aimed to be determined or something like that, so, you know, we know that there's a slot for them. And then we don't have to, you know, amend it, the list.
Sure.
And so, uh, for economic development, we would do the same thing. We would say Dave Eyle, John Helmrick, Kim Zival, and then. Um, then, and one other person. Potential person, we could say, and a potential candidate to B D, right, TBD?
Well, I only said that, I only said that for this one because it's a specific perspective.
Well, can we add to economic development, member of the business community?
Because there hasn't, there is an ask out there, is what I.
Yeah.
Out there, and I, I just thought of someone else, too, so, I mean, we're, yeah, we want to have more than three people on that committee, so.
So I just think we could say that in two additional spots that are pending. How's that?
Two additional business owners.
Mm-hmm, pending. Is that okay, John?
I'd say member of the business community. They may not be the owner, but they could be running a business, so.
That's true, member of the business community.
Or they could be, yeah, or a retiree with a lot of business background, so.
Two other, okay, and you did include Kim Zival, I believe.
Oh, yeah, oh, she's a definite, and I said, I said that around last week to.
Right.
Linay and you.
Okay, excuse me, I have to turn the light on.
We're losing you.
All right.
Run back, okay. Um, well, I think they've got some really good things finalized in that area. Any other discussion about, uh, the appointment in the members to the master planning committees? No? Okay, so, um, at this point, would we want to have a motion to approve? The membership to these four committees as discussed and reviewed by Linay this evening? Do we need to have a motion for that?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
I I'll, I'll move, so moved.
Okay, moved by Webster.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Mr. Eyle. And, um, I will do a roll call vote. Is there any further discussion on this topic? Then I will call the roll. DeFranco?
Yes.
Helmrich, Helmrick?
Helmrick, yes.
Why do that? Eyle?
Yes.
Israelis, yes. Shipley? Webster?
Yes.
Welk? Think he's not, um, present at this point. Okay.
Ed, did you say yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Ed. Okay. Thank you, everyone. I think that was a lot of, uh, great, it was a good discussion, a lot of things were accomplished. Moving on to, um, item B is the. Assigned Historic District Commission Research.
Um, this, this is pretty well described, and we heard from Mr. Rodman today. Uh, but the Township Board directed the Planning Commission to research, analyze, and prepare. And over the pros and cons to the formation of a historic district and the creation of a historic district commission. Also includes the study committee. So I'm looking for the Planning Commission to. Motion to direct this task to the Rural Character and Conservation Committee. That committee, as you heard from Daniel, is, um, gonna be looking at character and the natural environment, and, um. We think that that's a good fit for that committee.
Is there any discussion about that? Daniel, do you have anything to, um, offer in that line?
No, I think it's, um, I think that that request, um, or I think that, um. Yeah, request kind of naturally falls under the Rural Character and Conservation Committee, so I'm happy to take up that project.
Is there, um, do you feel like there's anything else that you need to have in support of doing that? You have John, who is in connection with Mr. Rodman, but, um, I think that you could also. Contact him after the discussion tonight, and John has a lot of materials that he'll give to you. But I think you should feel free to reach out to us, too, if you need any help.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, so do we need a separate motion?
I think that would be helpful to just, uh, clarify that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move that, yeah, uh, place the, uh, Historic District Commission Research Group under the. Rural Character and Conversation, uh, Convis, Conservation Committee.
I'll second it.
They moved by Webster, supported or seconded by DeFranco. Is there any more discussion? And I'll call the roll. DeFranco?
Yes.
Helmrick?
Yes.
Eyle?
Yes.
Israelis, yes. Shipley? Webster?
Yes.
Welk?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion pass. Um, next on our agenda, I'd just like to say, um, is a Bill Rowe recognition, and. Um, any of you may speak to Bill Rowe and. All his accomplishments that he's done, but, um, I would just like to acknowledge that the township did send him a thank you card. And many of you came in and signed it, and I, um, we all appreciate that, because we all appreciate what Bill has contributed to our community. Um, thirteen years, I believe. Is that correct?
He was fourteen, maybe.
Fourteen years. I know a certificate of appreciation and accomplishment was also sent to him from the township, and.
Yes.
From the board, and Joe was, um, helpful in getting that to him, and, um. I I didn't know if anyone else would like to say anything about working with him over the years, but. Um, first, I'd like to start with Ed. Do you have anything to? Add, Ed, you probably worked with Bill Rowe the longest and, um, probably have. I don't know, the most history with him, so is there anything you'd like to say?
No, 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 no.
No, okay. Anyone else here to share? Anything? Well, thank you, Bill. We all appreciate. Anything? Well, thank you, Bill. We all appreciate all the work you did and we are going to miss you. Hold on.
You're very welcome.
Okay, um. Moving on to item number nine, old business. Pond creation zoning provisions. Linay, would you like to talk about this?
Sure. Um, this is a follow-up item from the last meeting when we discussed modify the special land use standards for mining and landfills. And I forget the other use, but, um, there were three uses where, um, we didn't include standards in the groundwater ordinance, so we decided to look at amending the special land uses specifically, to have some more control over restoration, monitoring and, um, and a bit enforcement to give us some more teeth. So during that discussion, I think it was Dave talked about ponds and our pond regulations and, you know, one of the questions was, are we able to just prohibit ponds across the board? Um, and during the last few months, we sought, um, you know, best practices from the township attorney. Um, I consulted with some fellow planners. John posted a question to the Michigan Township Association, uh, listserv to just, if there were any other communities that prohibit ponds. Uh, we did not find any that prohibit ponds outright. That we looked at our current standards for pond creation and, um, and offer a few suggestions. So first, um, we could consider moving the, the whole process of creating a pond right now is reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator. So one thing that we could do is make it a special land use. So that process would then enable the planning commission to have a role in the pool of ponds. And also with any special land use, then we would send notices to residents within three hundred feet. So it would enable residents to have more of a voice in the process for considering ponds. So that would be one, uh, change that we could do. I would maybe try to distinguish a pond for, um, you know, recreation or a pond that's created for waterfront property development from something like a koi pond, like a decorative landscape pond. So we're gonna, we would have to be very, um, deliberate in the way that we define those because I don't know that we need to be considering like a koi pond as a special land use. So that's something that we can talk about. These are just talking points for today. Um, so that's A. B is that, you know, I'm curious what size would then trigger the special land use, right? Um, would it be anything over a thousand square feet? That's the minimum size we have for a house. That's, you know, I pick that size. It's, you know, easy to maybe imagine how big a thousand square feet is. Um, so maybe any under a thousand square feet or anything under a thousand square feet, that's also more of a landscape feature, would not require a special use. You know, just trying to see what that threshold might be, so I'm looking for some direction on that. Um, so that's B. That's also C. Um, if we do this, then we would define ponds because they're not even defined in our ordinance right now. Um, so I think we'd want to have a more thorough description of what the pond is. Um, I, uh, and E, if we did this, we would add a new section to our special approval chapter. That's chapter forty dash seven four seven. So we would add ponds as a special land use and then we would add some standards, so, um, for consideration. The first one is that same standard that we added for the other, um, you know, landfill and stuff and, and the standard we consider with the groundwater that, um, no pond requiring a special use should be located within a thousand feet of a municipal well. The second one is that we would want a written description of the purpose, the land use, like the future land use of that property, the excavation process, the disposal of the excavated earth material, and then how the site would be restored. We could even require a restoration plan, like a site plan if we wanted. Under E, we would want a description about how they would conform to the health department's soil erosion and sedimentation control standards. I want a standard for, um, back to Eagle, but the difference here is that we would want the Eagle permit prior to submitting the special land use. Like, like your application would not be complete unless you had that approval from Eagle. Uh, number five would be that, um, that we would require a performance bond. Uh, number six, so I was trying to find a way that we could get kind of updated, uh, performance indicators related to the size of the pond because again, we're not, we don't have a surveyor on staff. So put this in a requirement that, you know, within a year, I mean, maybe it's six months, I don't know, but within a certain amount of time, they would submit an ALTA survey to the township of the size of the pond. And once the pond is restored, we'd want another ALTA survey. Um, and then we would have to verify compliance prior to the release of any bond. Those are just some initial thoughts. Those are just six thoughts. Um, certainly there are more, but, I would ask for how we could maybe put some more teeth in the ordinance about ponds. So this is a, a first step. We haven't discussed this yet. I know it's getting late. We've been on here for a while, but, um, happy to discuss some other standards. This could also be, you know, we discuss at the next meeting, but I'm here to listen.
So I had a, just a couple of comments. One, I, when we had talked last, I, I didn't, uh, I don't know, maybe you didn't say it was even me, but you, you had mentioned that you looked into like eliminating ponds altogether. I, I think the comment, the comment that I made was, uh, you know, can we limit the size of any pond on any given development to that that's required for detention?
Okay.
I would ask. Uh, because obviously you'll need a pond or some kind of detention retention facility to handle any kind of stormwater. So that, that was my comment is maybe so we don't get ourselves into a situation where somebody's building a lake. I, you know, it, it, I just get the feeling that people in the township and, you know, and even on the planning commission maybe weren't fans of these bigger ponds on development. So my thought was, well, let's limit the size of any pond, uh, to that required for detention or retention. But that was my comment on that. Uh, and then, uh, as far as it's standard, and.
So that, does that mean, that means Dave, that we wouldn't allow any ponds? Like these kinds of ponds, right? I mean, you don't need a pond permit to do a detention basin or a retention pond, right? Like, that's just part of your site plan.
It's just part of your site plan, right. But I mean, ultimately, either the way I see it is all, I mean, if you had a, if you have detention, well, I should say retention on your property, that's a wet pond that is sized for your stormwater, uh, requirements, then, I mean, I, you get, you gotta make it so that they can do the development. But if we restrict the size to that, that's required for retention, then they're not building a huge pond just to be a water feature to sell water from property. Uh, is what I'm getting at. That.
So, yeah, right. And I think that's the question that I took to our, and also just looking at other townships, does any other community ponds? You know, the recreation ponds. And I wasn't able to find ordinances, yeah.
Okay, so maybe we're, okay, so you're, you're defining pond as that that's maybe above and beyond what is required to do the development.
Yeah, because when you do a development, we would review that drainage facility as a drainage facility, not as a pond. Um, so like, uh, you know, any of the recent developments that have come in that have to do one of those ponds on their property, like the, the, the Hercules, the grow facility, they have that pond. Um, they didn't have to get a separate permit from us. It was just part of their site plan.
Exactly, right.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I guess we could always, we, we could take this back to the attorney and say, we just want to remove the ponds entirely from our ordinance, like not even issue a permit. But they just, would we just not even allow them? But I.
Well, and I, yeah.
Not challenging.
I'm, yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure that's what we want exactly, uh, but I'm just trying to think of a way to, for us to better control this from happening in the future because it seems like it's, it's got such negative connotations with it would, you know, from, definitely from, you know, I mean, what we're hearing and from public comments. And it would be, uh, it'd be something that, and I, and I think like you're, what you're writing down here. I think these are good questions as far as, okay, what, what sizing are we talking about? And that's, the size is what I had in my head when I was saying, well, the size just won't exceed, what's required for detention.
Yeah, like the hundred year, the ten year.
Yeah, and, and if that was the case, then, and the way you're, you're explaining it, uh, is, you're right, that would just mean that there's no, there are no ponds, you know, allowed, other than that required for uh, for retention, for detention. So, and maybe that's not something that can be done. I was just putting it out there.
Maybe it is, maybe it is.
I think it's interesting. I, I really do think that's interesting because this raised questions for me. I wasn't quite sure if we were talking about a thousand foot being the circumference or, um, I, I just didn't know. I mean, I just thought, how do you really measure a pond? And, um, the other thing I kind of wondered about this when we looked at it too was, um, special approval use for some ponds, but not others, and how do we mitigate that? So I sort of like where you're going, Dave, with just saying, uh, detention or retention ponds, but can we do that? Is that what other people would like to see? Um, I look at people who have ponds, like commercial developments, golf courses use ponds for more than just their water source. I mean, it is part of their course. And so is that allowable? In the future, if we have changes to that, I don't know.
Wouldn't that fall under if it had to be special use?
Well, if we're saying that we aren't going to have special use and it's just going to be for detention, then, um, we wouldn't have an option, or would they? I mean, does it?
Well, or they'd have to design it so it serves that purpose. Courses, I believe, are special land uses. But these are all good questions. I'll call them all right now.
Another question I had regarding under the standards. And you have under here the, uh, I guess number four, with ponds requiring review and approval of Eagles show, uh, shall receive the app, applicable permit prior to submission of special approval use, uh, from the township. When you fill out those applications, does Eagle require an approval before they'll approve it? I, that's the only thing that I would ask.
I'll look into that.
And you're kind of caught in a catch twenty-two.
I said why on that. Um, someone has a lot of background noise. Would you mind, um, if you, I don't know who it is, but could, could you mute? There's, and it's difficult to hear other people when they're speaking.
I, I have a question, um, for Denise. Have you seen this in your, Denise?
No, actually, no. And you know, the question that I had was, uh, as we think about ordinances, you know, is, is this similar to wind farms and, you know, uh, cell towers that a lot of communities, because you saw such an increase in those types of activity, you needed an ordinance to take care of, of those types of, um, conditions. Wind farms and solar farms, um, are, are big ones. Is that it wasn't really addressed in your zoning ordinance, so they had to create, um, a zoning ordinance because you had an increase in this type of activity. So the question I would have is, okay, so not, this pond is not good. I, I understand that, but do you have, see an increase in ponds? And on the creation of ponds to this size? To then create the ordinance? I mean, are you having a lot of applications as you're thinking now? Oh my goodness, we're having all these people coming in and wanting to make ponds.
Well, uh, we've had one, two inquiries probably in the last six months. The, the pressure that we're seeing is that, uh, when you, if they're large enough, you can now market your lots. Like if you're doing a subdivision and then you have this pond that everyone has access to, now these lots are waterfront lots. So there's a premium.
So are you seeing that in regards to now the growth of your subdivisions and so forth? That that is really what these developers are doing?
Yes.
Okay, so then I understand why you then, and, and, and same with what, what Dave was saying, okay, you have your retention for rainwater, which is totally different than if in fact you're doing as this one across, across the way here. Is, okay, that's a whole different, that's that rainwater runoff. That, that's not what that is. So realizing the difference in that and so then therefore, uh, boy, I would, I'd almost say to put your zoning board on this and say, find out what, there's got to be other communities that are got the same issue. I mean, if you even looked at, you know, wind farms and solar farms, boy, you, you, I gotta believe there's somebody out there who's got the same issue. Somewhere. I, I don't know where, but you know, that's, again, we have not seen this up in, uh, up in the mid-Michigan area, no.
I think we see it more here, Denise, because, um, it's definitely a tourist area.
Oh, I, I, I certainly get that in, in, and whether you're having a lot of vacant land in your township that developers are going to and say, okay, I'll do a development, but I'm going to have to put a, in essence, you're putting a lake in that area. That's what you're doing. Is that a pond? Is a lake?
Right, and I, and I've, I've seen, like in my, with my background, I've, I've, I mean, building ponds and lakes and creating waterfront property is very commonplace in development. I mean, you, I mean, you, you, it's a whole idea behind it. You put a pond in, you get a lot premium, you make more money on the sale of the house. I mean, that's the name of the game. But I think what we're talking about here is because we're a waterfront community that, you know, we're, I think the appeal is, is that we got a river, we have Lake Michigan, you know, and we have, we have all these waterfront features that we just,
It trails and.
If I'm wrong, but we, we feel like man-made ponds don't fit the character of the community. Uh, that's, I think that's what we're talking about here. If I'm out of line, somebody say so, but I, I kind of feel like that's at least how the majority of us are thinking.
Would, would it make sense for that economic development group to look at this? I mean, I know it's not related to commercial, but it is related to, You know, the economics of development.
I'm not sure that it's related to Blue Star either.
No, the economic is the second one, though, the second committee. Right, it's not related to mobility, no.
No, but we did talk about economic development in terms of along the Blue Star.
Oh, right, right, right.
That.
Well, it's broader than that.
Okay. Well.
I hate to say it, sounds more like rural character, but I, there's too much on that.
I know.
That's too much.
It's too much on there.
But I, I really liked the way Dave just, the summary he just gave sounded good, but I also, when I first read this and when they talked us through it. There's something about making it special use that appeals to me as well. And maybe it does go back to setting the the size limit, I I know. I think there's a lot of good stuff here and.
I do, I agree with you, John. I like what. Dave said too, because I think ultimately that's our end goal. I just was trying to think how. Possibly a commercial, I don't know, an ice skating park or anything like that. May be different from creating a pond with lakeside, you know, residential.
I could look into prohibiting ponds. Or or water body creation. And still having, you know, the the drainage facility. And a recreation, wow, see, that's the problem with the recreation, because somebody could say. I mean, a public recreation. You know, for an ice rink or something, that's a pub, that's like a public park. And a feature in a public park.
But it doesn't allow for motorized vehicles.
No. Right, right, no, no.
So that would be a special use.
Well, I was actually thinking that we would just get rid of ponds entirely, like we just would not. And that, and I guess that's more of this legal question is the state allows you to create a pond. With, well, the state requires a permit if you're creating a pond over five acres.
But are we okay in saying that we don't allow?
We could, yeah, we could be more restrictive than the state.
Would we have to have a special hearing on that? I I would. Really want to know what the community's input would be.
Oh, yeah, and yeah, anytime we amend our ordinance, we have a special hearing.
I I have a question about that. So, gosh, may I back myself up on the four questions? I kind of feel like the township really needs to take the lead on that. I think that. As the pond that we've all been discussing. Yeah, I know Eagles involved, but I kind of feel like Eagles gonna look at the township and say, well. You allowed it, so. You know, what do you want us to do about it? And I kind of feel like the no pond thing might be currently the way to go. Because when we're allowing it and then something does go wrong. Again, even will come in and say, you you it, you did it, you allowed it, you voted on it, so. I I'm kind of right now thinking maybe we. Look at restricting it. To no ponds and then do special use, like like Becky's saying. If that makes sense. I'm I'm just concerned about the township allowing things and then again, something going wrong.
Well, if we prohibited them, then we wouldn't even have the special.
Yeah, exactly. So I think prohibiting it in I. I'm just thinking that that I I agree with Lanay, that might be the way to go right now.
Anyone else have any thoughts on this? Daniel?
I mean, Dave kind of. Made a light bulb go off in my head because the way I was thinking about it before was, you know, is. Is the issue at hand and and the concern from the community, does it have to do with the the approval process? And the approval process having gone wrong? Or does it have to do with the land use itself and that's what we're uncomfortable with? And I think that we do have to kind of make a determination here as to whether it's the approval process that we're uncomfortable with and we're unsatisfied with, and that's what failed us? Or are we uncomfortable with the like underlying land use pot being ponds, large scale ponds? So, you know, I would be interested to hear from the community. As to whether, you know, it's just a matter of the approval process and that we should move this into special approval use, or we're uncomfortable with the land use itself.
Good question, Daniel.
I do have one other question about this too, when we were talking about. The pond would not be near or would be with, you know, would not be located within a thousand feet. I mean, this is just going back to pond discussion, within a thousand feet of a municipal well. Would we also state that for? A drainage pond too? Would we consider that it would not be? Within a certain amount of footage from a municipal well or? Even a residential well? Or do we not consider that?
No, don't.
Thing we should consider?
No, I don't think that those drainage facilities. Usually they're just kind of a, they're they're either just holding the the water, letting it seep back in, or they're discharging to. To some existing. You know, drainage cores.
And aren't.
And we're not, yeah, I.
I mean, if you think of.
I'm not an engineer.
I know.
I feel like they're different.
Okay, and in agricultural.
In your head, do you know?
Who?
Dave.
Well, there's going to be two different types of ponds. There'll be a, you know, you. A lot of times what I've seen a lot around here and because of the sandy soils. You're going to have what's called a a detention pond that's actually a dry pond. And and all it is is like Lanay is saying is basically if you get a major rain event. It'll it'll fill up with some water and then and then it'll drain out. And that that's what it's designed to do to take the water. And then there's then there's. Retention ponds that hold water. And. Those, I mean, they, you don't, you'd have to have clay soil for one. For it to be able to hold the water, or you got to dig it deep enough. Where then it's groundwater, but then it's not even really acting as a. As a stormwater facility, but. So I, yeah, I, you're not gonna, you're not gonna dig them deep enough and have them be big enough where I feel like they'd be an impact. To, you know, to a well site.
And in agricultural areas, the water is sometimes used for. Water of crops and things like that, is that correct?
Yeah, the other are instances where those where ponds might be created for irrigation.
Right.
Or we also require the dry hydrants. Now with some of our development with the fire district. Have water. And and those are a pond. More or less, so. There's a lot to consider.
But isn't that's all special use ponds? That's, isn't that very different? Those are necessary versus. You know. Versus some a recreation.
Right, right, right. So you could, you could go about like defining different types of ponds. So there could be, you know, the. Like the the stormwater facility, or you could say, you know, a pond does not include a stormwater facility. You know, a dry hydrant and, you know, so you could. You could define it in such a way that we're allowing those things. And then you would put in general provisions that, you know, the the pond that you're defining and trying to prohibit would be prohibited.
I I thought, I apologize, I thought we, that's kind of where we were discussing. I I feel like we do need detention or retention in some instances, fire. But I thought that we were really more discussing recreational ponds. So I I, yeah, I think I'm have to shift gear here. I I think that might be important to distinguish the difference between a necessity and a recreational. Use.
Lanay? So, um, I'm just thinking about mining, like, you know, sand mining, for instance, and let's say that, you know, there's a of sand mining project somewhere in the township. In a lot of cases, pond creation is part of the reclamation process. Would we be, if if we said no ponds, would we? Essentially take that off the table? And say that, you know, you can't make a pond, even if it's for reclamation?
Yeah, these are all great questions that I don't know that. I think that's why when I spoke with our attorney initially and said, can we just prohibit ponds? There was some red flag, right? There's like, well, there are these other types of. You know, ponds, quote unquote, this water body that's created in other. Applications. So we can't just outright prohibit something. It's gonna take. More discussion about like, what is the tolerance, right? What are we going to be okay with? And. You know, things like the mining operations, as we know, have certain. Rights in our state law, so we don't want to set up a situation where we have. Conflicting. Ordinances. So I, what I can, I guess what I would like to know, maybe. Well, it seems like what I'm hearing is that I should go back to the attorney and say. We would like to. Explore the potential of prohibiting. You know, what is like the recreational pond, like the non necessary pond? Unnecessary pond. And. Understanding that there are certain ponds for irrigation. For stormwater, for. Potentially the mining, I don't know, potentially, you know, golf courses, you mentioned the dry hydrant. You know, so how do we? I'm hearing that you'd like to prohibit the non necessary pond. It's not that you're not. You're not looking to just have it be a special use that you'd like to prohibit it across the board.
Recreational ponds. I I don't know if that's good language for it, but it it clicked with me when she said that recreational ponds, but. It made sense.
So maybe we make a motion to. Have the attorneys review this. Is that what we need to do now and? Come up with some, I I don't know, what do we do now?
I don't think, do, I'm not sure that we need a motion, but I think that we. Could direct Lanay to speak to the attorney about this.
Okay.
And get his input first for follow up and then. We'll have to bring it to a public. Meeting soon, once we have some direction on where we want to go. I guess it sounds like. You explained it well, Lanay, and captured all of our feelings. Is that correct or our thoughts? Is there anyone else that would like to say anything to this?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lanay.
Do you think we need a motion?
No, I don't, no.
I don't think that we need a motion to this at this point. Okay, all right, well. I think it was very good discussion. Is there anything more that anyone would like to contribute to this discussion? No. Hearing. No, I think we'll move on to our next order of old business. And I know it's getting late, but is there any final thoughts for the book that we just read? We read Small Towns. For. For your knowledge, for everyone's knowledge, and we did complete reading the book and. If anyone would like to just kind of weigh in with some final words. About this book. And. What their thoughts are. I'd like to put some closure to it. John?
Yeah, I just want to throw this out to Denise Webster, in case you had not read or have this book. Bill Rowe returned his copy to the office. So if you want to catch up with our book club, there's a copy waiting for you in the office.
Okay, I think I'll stop by.
Okay.
You got it, all right. Anybody like to start and say anything about the book or their feelings about the book?
I can start.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, I was the first, I I read it twice. And the first part, the first time I read it, I kind of was a little overwhelmed by like the whole financial aspect of not over investing in infrastructure. But the second time I read it, I I I definitely picked up more on. These kind of, you know, community based actions that, you know, a municipality can take or citizens independently can take. You know, little things that, you know, make the community better, but have a big impact. And I was trying to think of it in terms of, you know, what we do here in Sagatuck Township. So for instance, on Saturday. Some members of the township participated in a a garbage cleanup of Blue Star Highway. And I would like to report that in front of Eileen's Automotive, it was pristine, there was no garbage to pick up. But there is a lot of garbage that ends up on Blue Star Highway and, you know, we couldn't get everything. But there were things that were out there that, you know, had been bothering me and, you know, we got a lot of positive honks. We had people stop and pull over and tell us what a great job we were doing. And that they would not participate in the future. You know, it's something practical that you can do. It doesn't cost any money. But it just sends a real positive signal to the community and, you know, it's, you know, to think about smaller projects that get more of the community involved, so they they take ownership. For the community, because, you know, we are just, you know, representatives of our community and we try to represent them and listen to them as best we can, but. You know, to bring them into the fold, I think there's a lot more that that we can accomplish, so that's my takeaway from the book.
So I think that someone needs to mute themselves.
Sorry, it's it's Commissioner Wold and.
Can you?
I've been muting and then it unmuted, so I'm keeping up with it.
I'm sorry, all right. Thank you, Daniel. Anyone else here to share any last thoughts on the book that we just read?
Well, I I like what it had to say to connectivity in the community. And how, you know, just with. Sidewalks, bike paths, those types of things and, you know, and connecting the community. And making it, you know, things accessible and easy to get to without having to drive me, you know, and and it's. I I kind of like that approach with it. I know when we bought our house, I mean, one of my. One of the big things that I really enjoyed about. You know, one of the amenities anyways is that I was close to the bike path. And I can, you know, I can walk into downtown Sagatuck or I can hop onto my bike and. You know, and ride with my daughter. And I mean, so I I like how it it talked about the connectivity and the, you know, and. The accessibility, you know, and how important that is in a community.
Anyone else? I really enjoyed the book myself and I think. It. It was helpful for me in just looking at maybe past involvement with city government. We learned early on that. If you involve the right people and involve people. Of all kinds to work and and be part of what you're doing, you have this buy in and you. You end up with something that's so much better than if you just have one or two people working on a project. And so. I appreciated that. They took a lot of ideas and now. They've written this book about. Things that's going out to so many people and creating more of an impact and in more of a response. So I I like that part of it and maybe you all didn't get that from the book, but I. Really did, and I thought that was good and I really did.
And I thought that was good and I really did enjoy the infrastructure. That was a big aha learning moment for me. And, um, it made me kind of proud of where I live here because we do take on a lot of our own infrastructure costs. And we are prepared for putting in a new road here in the ravines, which we desperately need in a few years. And, um, those kind of things are nice to know that, you know, we're on it. Everybody here has to contribute to the, to that every year. And I thought, I felt a little validation when I read the book too, so that was nice. But, um, uh, I don't know, thank you, Linay. I'd like to say thank you to you for suggesting this book. And, um, if anyone else has any last words, we'd love to hear it. Well, moving on, because it's late, um, we are at the point of our meeting where we have public comment again. Is there anyone that, from the public, that would like to speak at this time? Hearing none, we'll close public comments at this time. And, uh, number 11, staff update. That would be. Um, I just wanted to update the planning commission that we have had, um, at our ZBA, we recently had a request to expand a legal non-conforming use. That was for the Lake Shore Motel. We have the same request coming up for a single-family home where the homeowner is looking for an addition. So those are two instances where the ZBA is hearing the same type of request twice. Sometimes planning commissions like to know what ZBAs are doing in case there are needs to amend the zoning rules. Um, I don't see that there is in this case per se, but, um, potentially with our legal non-conforming use expansions. The forkers, they are the applicants, we denied their special land use request. We sent them a letter. I never did receive confirmation that they got the, um, certified letter, but we did also mail a letter, um, and email a copy of that stating that they have until the, um, early part of June, um, mid-June to kind of cease the, um, commercial aspects of their operation for that trucking facility. Um, I'm gonna be out of town for the first two weeks of June, so I won't be able to go and inspect it, but when I return, I will. Um, and I'll probably visit there at the end of May too, just to check in and see what's happening. But, um, that's happening. And then with the Van Horn property, um, we did get a copy of the letter from Eagle. Eagle has requested additional information. The applicant's attorney kind of contested that letter and sent a kind of follow-up letter to Eagle, um, asking them to remove the word violation from that letter. So there's still some debating happening with that. Eagle, in that letter, requested additional information from the applicant. And I just think it's important to note that the applicant has not received a permit from Eagle yet for a pond greater than five acres, nor have they been denied the permit. So the permit is still pending. And then, let's see. Uh, we're continuing enforcement on another property on Old Alleghan. The township did work out an agreement with the property owner to, um, pay for a dumpster. And then the property owner would be making regular payments back to the township. However, there there were many things on the site that were not able to go into the dumpster. So we're still having issues with enforcement on that property and we got regular emails from neighbors. So that's where we are. Um, I had not heard that there was a violation from the county back to the chap Van Horn. I did contact the county two weeks ago and and that's what prompted them to go and do a site inspection with the blowing sand. And their permit had been expired, so they, um, it had, as far as I know, it it hasn't been renewed. I I don't know, maybe it has, but they did do a site visit, they issued a, um, like a a report of findings and we were sent a copy of that after I requested it. And so I I just emailed the county to ask if a violation had indeed been issued, um, because we don't, we don't have a copy of that if it was. But it was referred to by someone on the phone, so, or in this meeting, so I wanted to check in on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Linay. Does anyone have any questions, over Linay? Or any discussion about any of these items right now?
I, you know, I've had a, I guess, just to let everybody know, but I did have, uh, Mr. Van Horn stopped in today to, uh, and had told me that, uh, he is having a surveyor come out to survey the pond. Naderfeld, I think it is, Nader, Naderfeld. So he's, he's having a surveyor come out. And so hopefully, I I'm assuming that that staff will get that, uh, that survey. Uh, so I don't know what it's gonna say, but he is working on that. And and he was also, you know, just saying that he was working with, uh, I guess he had presented some information to, uh, and I don't know if it was staff, Linay, or if it was the fire, I don't, I don't know what's going on with the other thing, but as far as like water main and and they was working forward to trying to work through some of these issues, so.
Yeah, that's very separate, yeah.
Yeah, so he, uh, he is, he is working on, he did mention something about the, uh, the county that had come out and they're requiring, uh, a couple of things that they want stabilized. And he's, he told me he's moving forward on that. Oh, and, uh, that's just, you know, from his, he just, like I said, stopped in and said, you know, I just like you to know, basically, this is, this is, uh, kind of what, what I'm doing. And and I said, okay, thank you. And and I figured I'd just pass it on because I'm assuming that's why you told me is so that I could, you know, express it to all of you, just to, he wanted people to know that he was, he was doing things to correct it or or to, uh, you know, to improve the situation, so. That's all.
And, excuse me, and Linay, I believe, I think there was a letter we received in the office yesterday from the county. Obviously, I don't have it here. It was addressed to Supervisor Osman and I put it, I gave it to Mr. Fry to have on record, like I said. I I glanced at it, but I think it might be what's being referred to, so we should verify that tomorrow.
Okay, that sounds good, yeah, I'll follow up on that. And like I said, I emailed, you know, during this meeting, when we had a pause, I did email Jacob Wheatley at the county and ask if a violation letter had been issued and if we could please have a copy.
Perfect.
And then just asking if we could be on any email distribution, because I don't know if the neighbors are getting these letters before we are.
Well, this is a mail letter, so.
Okay.
That's all I, you know, just different, different ways of communicating depending on what agency is doing it, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know how Roy knew that there was a violation, then, maybe I'll ask him.
Okay. Um, I have a question, it's sort of related to, um, what you were talking about. But do we have an ordinance that prohibits parking of unlicensed, non-working vehicles on people's property?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I I could have looked that up, I was going to.
No, no, yeah, we do, if if there is an issue, you know, there was, there was one of those at, uh, at the old Masonic Lodge that we, you know, worked to have removed. We always try to call the owner and work with the property owner before we start sending letters, yeah.
Okay, okay. I I noticed today when I went down Old Alleghan Road that there's quite a few, there's a few, not quite a few, but there are a few of those there. So, um,
Yeah. At the property I was talking about?
At that property and a couple others, actually, on that road. So, anyway, thank you. Number 12 is the Township Board Liaison Update, John?
Okay, before I do the board, the board meeting updates, just two items I want to share. Because, you know, I'd written to everyone a couple of weeks back on how New Standard, which will be the, uh, recreational marijuana retail space on Blue Star Highway across from, uh, Dr. Wiley's office, were offering, they wanted to get backstage tours to members of our board and the planning commission before they get to the point where per certain areas are off limits legally. They, they've had some delays. They contacted me Friday, I think. The dates they're looking at now that should work for them are May 7th and or May 8th. And I'm just waiting to hear back and when they have something more concrete, um, I'll share it with everybody. And also another just calendar item, this Friday, just so you're aware, the, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers is having a Zoom meeting with the consulting parties. And these are any entity, including the township, National Trust for Historic Preservation, the tribal groups and others, anyone that had done written comments on the marina request that is still pending with them. So they're having this, uh, as I said, meeting of everybody. Manager Fry and I will be involved in that, since there's been some changes and, you know, who handles these meetings? And we've, we've met with, uh, made a conversation with our council last Friday to just to talk about this before it happens. So that's just an FYI. On the board action side, we've met twice since the planning commission last met, March 10th and April 14th. Some of the things that transpired, I won't go into every detail, uh, minute, you can always see minutes on the website. We did vote, though, to not adopt a suggested off-road vehicle resolution that had been brought to us several times by concerned groups. And there was a movement to get a county-wide ordinance. We felt it wasn't appropriate for Sagatuck Township to entertain an ORV resolution. And then, as you know, we voted to ask the planning commission to investigate the potential of a historic district near the river mouth and report back with pros, cons and process. That obviously moved forward today. And we also appointed Lori Goshorn, who's very busy now, to the Tri-Community Recycling Committee. More recently, we approved with, uh, we're very proud to approve the contract for our new manager, Joe Fry, who stopped being interim and went official last month. Kathy Brockington from the Legal Women Voters, she's been giving these presentations and she's gone to the two cities as well. As part of the congressional redistricting effort, which should start moving forward a bit now, because I think census figures were released today or there was some movement there. Anyway, there's this notion of communities of interest. So she's trying to get support from our three communities to say, don't separate us. We are communities that have a lot of shared aspects and interests. So she's been a, a big proponent of that concept. We also voted to extend board meetings via Zoom through July. That could be reversed, but that's the step we took last week. We, uh, also, you know this, but we're proud that we appointed Denise Webster to the planning commission. We had four applicants, which was encouraging to get that level of interest. And, uh, and we appointed Denise Shipley from the Planning Commission be liaison to the ZBA. And we recognized planning commission member Bill Rowe for his many years of service. And several of us spoke to that and we is, it was a certificate of recognition was issued from the board. And then just for anyone budget-minded, our fiscal year, as you know, ends on June 30th. We have to get a new budget approved to start on July 1st. The official public hearing on the next fiscal year budget has been set for June 9th. But closer to home, this Thursday, we're having our first board, um, board budget workshop, which is open to the public, if you're interested. That's gonna be this Thursday, April 29th at 3:00 PM.
And that's by Zoom?
Yes, well, it's, that's gonna be a hybrid. Public is Zoom, the, uh, board is actually going to meet in a very social distance room in back and see how that goes. Thank you.
Any questions for John?
Um, I would just like to say that, um, both John and Daniel attended the Michigan Township Association Annual Conference by Zoom. And I was, I I had considered putting it in our agenda tonight and just asking you to say a few words. But maybe at our next meeting, you could, um, mention some of the highlights of that. Because a lot of information in in education is shared and it's a pretty exciting time, I think, to go through those. So, um, especially if anything is related to our committee work. And, um, and John, you had mentioned that you have available or access to the site through June, is that correct or?
Yeah, the, um, starting next week, well, we will have access to actually the videos of the presentations. We already have, and I've been downloading and putting them in a Dropbox, the PowerPoint presentations, which are easily shared. And, uh, I think I sent you guys the list of the different sessions or if I didn't, I'll check on that. Because many of them were, were ordinance and planning commission related. It was like, what boards should know about this? And, uh, it doesn't hurt all of us to, uh, hear these things. And there was, there was a whole session on, um, you know, marijuana regulations and, you know. I've got lots of notes, I always say that, and I'm not remembering what my big highlights were, but I will review that and, um, get back in touch with everyone. Daniel, I'll let you take over.
And I just thought specifically if it's related, um, to our master planning committees to, in terms of housing or, um, rural character, that would be nice to highlight too, but you can talk about anything you want.
But even previous to that, did I not share with you, like, and Linay, the, uh, I had attended a master planning workshop of the Michigan Association of Planners.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's the Linay said to me, there's so many documents and presentations out there, but it's, um, it's a challenge to get them disseminated and then to get everyone to have the time to really review.
Yeah, you sent those slides from the Michigan Association of Planers, thank you.
And, uh, just for your information too, Denise Webster, um, the township is very supportive of education for its, um, committee members. And so, um, John's been doing a good job of posting what's coming out there that we can sign up for. And I try to do that too. So, um, just, just know that you're welcome to take any of these too, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So our next meeting is scheduled for May 17th. And with that, if we have no further business.
I, may I, I was on mute and I was unable to.
Oh.
I had, I apologize, I have a question, my, I'm just reading, I got an email, my membership, I I had joined myself, Association of Plan, Mission Association of Planning, um, prior to becoming, uh, planning commissioner. And my membership is now due. Is that something that the township will help me out with or am I on my own to pay for a new membership?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that, because I just written down, because I've been meaning to ask MAP about this, because I got my renewal notice too. It's, uh, it's $60 a year. My feeling is the more people that are members, the better. But I guess let me run that by, uh, discuss that with Joe and, uh, we'll get back to you. But it would seem to me that there's certainly room for more than two or three people to be members and avail themselves of all this.
I'm happy to do it if it's on me, that's fine, um, whatever, whichever way, it's fine, just let me know, thanks, John.
Yep, yeah.
I also did get an email from Michigan Association of Planning, just following up again about that waterfront, zoning kind of committee that they had, that you were interested in. I forwarded it to you, but they're still forming that. They did ask if we had, if we as a community were interested in that topic and if there were commissioners that would be. And I said we were, right? Because we are in our master plan and you spoke about it and there were other heads nodding, so, um, I'm still waiting for them.
Daniel sent me a link also, Daniel, do you want to say something about it, about that link you sent me, about the, um, anyway, do you want to say anything or don't?
Anyway, do you want to say anything or drop me to?
Well, it's nothing about the Coastal Academy, I don't know if that's what you're referring to, Laine?
That's what Laine was referring to, yeah.
Thank you, that was the name, the Coastal Academy.
So, so the Coastal Academy, so essentially what I found out is the Coastal Academy is being partly funded or has received grants from Eagle in their, and I don't know if this is an older program or this is, it seemed to me like it was new or it might be, you know, a reemergence of something, but Eagle now has a coastal management grant program. And there's a lot of different things that fall under that, even like economic development, but it all has to do with communities that are on the coast. And I think they awarded $1.2 million to various projects last year. Grand Haven Township actually got some money from them to do a restoration project. And I think the city of Grand Haven got money to restore their lighthouse, so I just thought something that was interesting that we can keep on our radar, I was going to brief the rural character and conservation committee on it. I also shared it with John Vanderbeek, because I thought that that might be something that, you know, would be useful for him for trails, but I've just kind of been trying to spread the word that this grant opportunity exists. And that, you know, it might be something that, you know, it might be a tri-community project that we identify. It might be something that someone in the community is already working on and it would be relevant to them. But there is an opportunity for grant monies on projects that are pertaining to coastal management. And again, Eagle is very loose on the connection to coastal management. It could be economic development, but it's anything related to communities on the coast.
Thank you, Daniel, that's better than I explained it.
I just emailed them again. They're offering two coastal leadership academies, a virtual one in June, aimed at pulling together representatives from interest groups from around the state and in-person series in the fall to train decision-makers from coastal communities. She asked if the township and adjoining communities would be interested beyond just you, Denise, and I replied that we would be and I thought that we'd probably have some support from adjoining communities, but, you know, we'd have to check with them. I never got a reply, this was on March 30th. I replied right away, they haven't replied. So I just sent another email saying that we were still interested. It sounds like because, it sounds like the fall might be a good one, because it's in-person, but also for decision-makers, you know, which are you guys who deal with some of these rules. Anyway, I'll let you know, I'll forward you anything they reply with.
Excellent, thank you for your help, Laine, I appreciate the information.
Any other discussion this evening? Well, thank you all for a very long meeting and I appreciate, we all appreciate what we get from each other, so thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by DeFranco and seconded by Eileen. I will take a roll call vote. DeFranco?
Yes.
Omrick?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Israel, yes. Shipley?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Welk?
Thank you, Welk.
Comments from, okay, meeting is adjourned at 9:44.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.